Ready?
Yeah.
All right. Folks, welcome back. We are now back in a regular session. And so at this point, we are going to walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins?
We have to vote to a...
No, we already did.
No, we already did.
Four executive session.
Yep. Any walk-ins? Yes. I need you to come down to the table, if you don't mind, and identify yourself and your address. Good evening.
Good evening to you, sir.
I need your name and your address.
My name is William Thomas Tibbetts. My address is 79 Jericho Road, Situate, Mass.
Good evening. What can we do for you?
Um, I just have some questions about some business that happened between Cumberland Farms, the town of Situate, myself, my mother, and my father, who are my partners, half partners with me.
Just so that you understand, Mr. Tibbetts, walk-in is... We can give you five minutes to talk. We can't have a discussion or dialogue because it's an open...
I just have questions. I don't need to talk.
I just want to give you kind of the parameters of what we have here, okay? Because it's not a posted agenda item, we can't get into discussion because it would violate the open meeting law that the state sets, not us. It's set by the state.
Okay.
So we're happy to hear your questions.
Sure.
And just to be aware that about five minutes is what we're willing to give.
Okay, great.
And then we move on, okay? Feel free.
Well, I've had plenty of time to think about it. Thank you for walking me, you, to your meeting. Hopefully, everybody here can keep an open mind and hear what I have to say without interrupting me. Maybe you can bend the rules and give me more than five minutes, but we'll see. Just a little background about myself. I've been...I was born here. I've been here my entire life. My grandfather started building houses back here in 1953. He built over 200 houses in this town. My father was a builder in this town. I had dreams of one day becoming a property owner and a builder and a successful businessman, as well as a professional hockey player. I played professional hockey, didn't go as planned because of some other things. But my life was going great up until probably right around the time where I was told that Cumberland Farms had backed out of our 40-year land lease where I was the tenant. Now, I've never had a good job since I got done playing hockey. I was finally going to have a couple bucks. And the reason that they were quitting in the letter, and personally, I've had dinners with both of the people, was because that they were being made to put the pumps behind the building. They had numerous emails and phone calls, three meetings, they canceled the fourth. Now, I'd like to read to you here on page 70 of the zoning bylaws. It actually speaks directly to the village business overlay district zoning. And the reason that I targeted this area in this town, everyone said, "You're crazy to go back there after all you've been through." I said, "It's the best deal around right now." So it's the best bang for your buck. Situate's blown up in real estate since 2000, 2004, and on. Now, here it is, Situate's building, and I can't be a part of it. My family can't be a part of it. The purpose of the village business overlay district is to promote opportunities for local small-scale businesses, encourage alternative modes of transportation such as public transit, bicycling, and walking, provide for higher-density mixed-use and multifamily housing in village areas, provide for a variety in residential housing development patterns in which reflect the unique characteristics of each sub-area, increase the production of housing affordable to low- and moderate-income households, and encourage efficient provision of necessary utilities and community services. The village overlay business...the village business overlay district will not change the zoning of the underlying district, which can continue to be applied except where an applicant voluntarily wishes to use provisions of this Section 560. So how this reads to me is not only is it welcome and no problems with the zoning, it also says that it wants community services. Now, the gas prices, the $3 coffees everywhere, the $15 bag on the coffee, everybody can't sustain this throughout there. This was an alternative way to make money for the town. I calculated you losing $3 million a year in business here without this. I don't think the town can afford to turn down people like Cumberland Farms and my family. I know a lot of people around here. A lot of people don't like me, a lot of people like me. I'm not focusing on that. I'm doing good. I'm focusing on my future, my family's future, the future of this town. I'm running against you for state...or pardon me, Town Selectmen. I wish you nothing but the best. I certainly will talk to people here, older ladies and town people who've been here for hundreds of years with more respect than you've done on the videos I've watched. I don't agree with a lot of the things that are going on. I'm almost done. I don't agree with a lot of things that are going on here. What is the significant public benefit to let 70 units go into a parking lot when they're only giving you $2.2 million, and the guy that's going to get the 70 units in the lot is going to make hundreds of millions? Doesn't seem like a fair trade-off.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Tibbetts, I just...as John...as Mr. Danny, as Mr. Chairman, said, we can't really discuss something that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
But I have one question.
Sure.
Has this been before the planning board in an official meeting? And did they put in...did they apply to do the development?
So when I was...the guy, Dan Monger, who represented Cumberland Farms, was on the planning board here. When the...it got denied. Bill Orenberger told me, "We hate Dan Monger around here. We think he's a punk."
I'm sorry. Did you say they...
That's what he said.
You...Cumberland went before the town?
Cumberland Farms and Dan Monger was representing them. I watched the videos. They had no teeth. They got pushed around. They were making them put the pumps behind the building, no canopies, lots of shrubbery and grass, a smaller building. Cumberland Farms is the number-one convenience store in the world, the number-one. And it's a New England-based chain.
Thank you, sir. I'll make sure that I look up at the...
It's a New England-based chain, and it's a local landlord. And it's 40 years. And I could have done the condos, and I could have done that stuff. But to put more...that takes millions of dollars. I don't have $2.2 million so you can fix the sewer problem down Cedar Point. And that's the significant public benefit, as I understand it, for the John Drew Project. And I don't have...I'm just a small-time businessman who had a dream living down Sand Hills. There was 5,000 people when I was growing up here. I played street hockey on Jericho Road because there were no cars going by, all right? Now, there's 25,000 people down here about, if we want to be honest, and probably about 50 to 100 in the summertime sometimes. And you can't pick and choose and play Monopoly with people's lives on what businesses can and can't go in here when it's zoned for it and when it's legally that. Ann Burbine cannot say...one quote was...
Mr. Tibbetts, I have to interrupt you at this point.
We don't want the gateway to...this is the last comment.
You've been saying a lot of things...
Thank you, Mr. Danny. We don't want the gateway to Situate to be a gas station. Pardon me, but the gateway to Situate is a dilapidated medical building, a Dunkin' Donuts, a construction lot, a train station, a transfer station, a doggy daycare, a animal hospital, okay, a golf course. A welcome addition would have been the Cumberland Farms. And I think I did this the right way. Grown up a lot over the years. I just want people to keep an open mind. When next time I come before you with the project, if it ever happens again, you don't do what you just did to me and my family. We've been here for hundreds of years.
First of all, Mr. Tibbetts...
I'm not going anywhere.
You didn't come before us.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Are there any other walk-ins? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next, which happens to be the report of the town administrator. Jim?
Very quickly, first on the storm over the weekend. We kind of cut a break. The storm came further north than we thought, turned mostly to rain and then snow. We did have some minor flooding, as expected. Luckily, the water receded prior to the drop in temperatures, so we didn't have that freeze, especially on a cold Parkway. The highway department did a really nice job in some trying conditions, actually brined the whole town Thursday and Friday, pretreated. And then on Saturday, the temperature dropped, and Kevin's here. They used our new molasses salt, which activates much lower temperatures than our current salt. So it really did a nice job. We do have some problem areas that I think everybody's aware of that we keep working on. Obviously, the thaw and freeze cycle of the next couple of days, people are going to need to be careful driving. The crews are out all day Monday. They were out all day today, but things are going to freeze and thaw, so people need to be careful. But kudos to the highway department for doing a really nice job in some pretty trying conditions over the weekend. We had the MMA Annual Conference this week, and as part of that, our health insurance provider, Maya, provides the range for health insurance increases for the upcoming year. The rates will be increased on a range of a minimum of minus 7% with an average of .6% and a maximum of 5%. That's pretty good news for us. Financial forecast, we had that at 8%. So the worst we're going to do is 5. So we picked up 3%. On a $6 million-plus-dollar budget, that's about $180,000 we picked up right there. And that could be even lower when we get our actual rate, so that's good. The fire boat that was approved at the town meeting last spring, we have a bid opening next week on the 31st. We'll see how that comes in, how many bids we get. Grant scorecard for the first couple of weeks in January, we're already at $94,000 right off the bat, so we're off to a strong start. That $2.2 million grant last year is going to make it hard to top last year, but we're going to plug away at it. And then I know Mara had wanted to make a mention of our wellness award, so our staff is here for that. So I'll just cede that to Mara real quick. Rather than do it myself, I'll have Mara do it.
And Pam's here, right? So...
Yeah, I'm representing them all.
You are representing them all?
Nancy helped.
And Nancy. So just for purposes of everyone, Situate was awarded the newcomer award into the Maya Annual Award. So if folks out there don't know, Maya is our insurance agency that we moved to about two years ago. And they have been a great partner with Pam and some folks on the school side, as well as Nancy, Julie, and some other folks in your office, putting together a wellness program for our employees, because we all know that, you know, keeping our employees healthy certainly helps them from a personal as well as a professional aspect. So I love some of the stories that you did with doing stretching or teaching the plow drivers how, you know, an appropriate time to review that, and it's teaching them to get out and stretch and remain healthy and nimble, as well as yoga. Is some DPW, I think, did you do yoga with, or...
Yeah, we've done yoga. Anyone can do it, but the school, a lot of school people participate. Kevin Cafferty actually participates in the yoga program.
I'll have to see that. You don't invite us, Pam. I'm not invited.
Why is somebody laughing at poor Kevin? That's not nice.
Kevin and I are actually doing Zumba now.
Oh, okay.
That's quite comical, but a really good time and a nice exercise program.
Comical watching me try to do it.
Yeah. Well, we were presented with a nice award at the convention and called up, so I was there to take it on your behalf. Very proud of all of you. So here, this is for you and all of the associates.
Yeah. I just want to thank Julie Kelly in my office. She does...she's taking this under her wing, not really wanting to, and she's done a really good job with it, so I want to give her credit.
Thanks, Julie. Thanks, Pam.
All right. So...
Is that the last thing?
I think that's it for the report. So if that's the case, then let's get to our 6:30 discussion on the vote discussion flagpole donation for the public safety complex and the Situate Town Library. Tony Machini is the individual. He's not here, but...and he can't because he actually works for FEMA, and he actually travels to various places throughout the country, helping out those who are distressed. But for those of you who don't know who Tony Machini is, Tony had actually donated a flagpole over at the athletic field, and it's like a 100-foot flagpole that they put up at the football field. And so he personally paid for the installation, and that's what's being used. And so what's being proposed now is that, if I can get here...I'm not sure the height of the public safety...do you have it there?
Well, there's a backup.
Well, what it is, is that...thanks. My thing went off. The size of the flagpole, he'd like to put a larger one there for the public safety building and take the one that's there and move it over to the library is what his proposal is. And he's going to pay for all of it. So what he was hoping is to get permission from the board to be able to allow the board to say, "Yes, you can go forward and do that if that's what you'd like to do." And so I told him I'd bring it to the board and see what the board wanted it to do, if they liked to have a much larger...I think the size is what he's thinking of, a very large one over here at the public safety building and then the one they're putting at the library. So that was for a discussion for the board. See what your thoughts are.
Great idea.
Good.
That was very generous of him.
That was very generous. Has the police department and fire department opined on making sure that it's just in place that's not obstructing?
Not yet, but I figure what I would do is first find out if that's the case, because obviously if there's a helicopter, you're going to be using it. We're going to make sure that the pole's not too high so that interferes with it. But at least first get a green light from the board to say, "Let's take a look at it."
And as far as placing it at the library, the same kind of conversation should be had with the director there, and I'm sure that we could find...
I'm surprised we don't have one there already.
It was on the wish list.
Your wish...their wish is now coming true. So there we go.
But yeah, operationally, just have to have that conversation with Kevin Kelly.
Perfect.
I think it's great. It's very generous.
I'm not sure if we need a vote on that. I just want a discussion, at least that the board is...
It says vote.
So maybe just a vote to go forward...
Accept the donation?
To accept the donation to go forward and come back with maybe the plans, if that's okay for future. So it's...we have an idea where and everything else? Is that fair?
Sure.
Move to accept the donation of a flagpole for the public safety complex and the town of Situate Library from Tony Machini.
Second motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's move on...
Can we get a letter, maybe? Should we have...
Sure. Yeah.
Can you write a letter to him, just thanking him for...
Sure.
All right.
Right.
All right. So let's go on to a 6:40 discussion vote, sewer privilege fee waiver request for 2731 Hood Road. And I think Father Bishoi, you're here. Good evening. If you could, could you come down to the table here with people who are involved and identify yourselves for the public? Welcome to town.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Father Bishoi Mikhail, I live in Marshfield, but I'm responsible for the Church of St. Mary and St. Mark in 2731 Hood Road.
Good evening. And with you are gentlemen...
I'm Jeff Morris. I live in Marshfield, but I grew up in Situate, and I've done a lot of the site work there since they bought the church. I put in...well, I'll explain in a few minutes.
Okay.
So I'm kind of doing the work regardless of what we're doing, so...
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Farouk Youssef. I'm an architect. I live in Hull, 53 Edgewater Road, and I'm a part of the...member of the church, and I did all the drawing for the addition.
Good evening. Thank you. All right. So you are looking for, in essence, if I'm not mistaken, there is the present church of St. Mary and St. Gregory?
St. George.
St. George, I apologize. And that there was a sewer connection that was put in for the church?
That church.
Okay. And that next to the church, formerly known as St. Francis, so people on TV have an idea of what we're talking about, there is the center, if not, if I'm not mistaken, like a little gymnasium, some classrooms, some showers and things. That's the other building that's next to it, correct?
Correct. But it was...my understanding, it was a school, and it closed for about 12 years old. It was in horrible conditions. But we are not using for that. It will be Sunday school activity, Sunday school classes after the church, which are an essential part of our worshiping. It's not separate or...and then we'll have it...we'll do some activities for the kids during summer vacation...I mean, school vacations and weekends. That's all. So that's...and for...because it was one system, so we thought we were under...we under...or under the impression that it is one fees that the Catholic Diocese of Boston, the Archdiocese, paid the fees to connect the sewage. So they never connected to any building. I think it is just extended to the property, but they didn't connect it to the church, neither to the church nor to the school. So at least we were under the impression it is one thing. So that's...and then we got surprised when we applied to connect the sewage to the church that we are asking to pay for the fees to the building.
So in other words, because sewer was put in there, there's a betterment fee that's paid for connecting. That's typically what happens when you have a house or a structure or a business or something, you pay for the betterment fee. And you're saying the Archdiocese had paid its fee, but it never connected the church in order to connect its school or what was it like?
No, exactly. Correct.
And so when you purchased it, they paid the fee, one fee, but because there is the additional building next to it, the school, if you will, that's an additional fee that's being charged to you?
That's right. And actually, in...when we bought the property, in the description of the property, it said town sewage. And when we moved there, we didn't know that it's actually not physically connected to the town.
Okay.
So that's how we...that's where we are right now, basically.
So still unseptic at that time when you purchased it?
When we bought it, yes. But now the church is now connected to the town sewage. We didn't connect the water yet to the school. We're still doing the, you know, the bathrooms and things like that, so...
Okay. And you're here because you're seeking a waiver on the connection to the school abortion center?
Exactly. Exactly.
All right. And you went to the sewer department, and the sewer department indicated that you needed to pay the additional fees.
Jeff Morris actually did, yeah.
When I got involved with this project, it was right when they first bought the church. And I went down there to show them how to get in, and the first thing we noticed right away, there was no water in the church, even though it had bathrooms, faucets, and everything else. And I called the town, and they sent some guys down. And they came back and they said, "Well, the reason there's no water here is because the pipe hasn't been connected out at the street. We put a new main down the street about 10 years ago, and the church never hooked up to it."
To water or to sewer?
The water.
The water.
So the whole time, that church had the people sitting there babysitting the church, there was no water at that church.
Were they on well water?
No.
Disconnected?
There's no well...as far as I know, there's no well water there.
So that was...at some point, it was disconnected?
It was disconnected.
Okay.
And so the first thing I had to do is get permission to get, you know, to go out and hook up. And when I told the water department, I said, "You better do it quickly because we're paving Hood Road in two days." And so I had to basically...
He saved us, actually. If I interrupt now...
Basically dropped everything and went down, got, you know, we had to cut the road, put the pipe in, and they got water. Well, then they said, "We'd like to hook up the town sewer too because the stub is there." The stub was put in, you know, whenever they did the Hood Road pipeline.
Yep.
And I went down, I got the permit, and they said, you know, "It's 50 bucks." So I wrote a check for 50 bucks, and I put that in. Well, Father said, you know, "We'd like to hook up the school building too," which only sounds reasonable. And I went down, and at first, I was told it would probably be another 50 bucks. But Will said to me, "Well, you've got to wait a day. I've got to go up and talk to them at the town hall." And so I said, "Okay." Well, the next day, it went from 50 to 15 to 16 to the next day 32. $32,000.
Let's stop there because there's not just for the church, but there's also for the center. And then I understand that you wanted to build a house there. So we're going from one, an accessory dwelling, so to live there, which is a whole different use. So from the town's perspective, Mr. Morris, there is a rationale for it before people in TV land begin to realize that the town is just charging people, you know, excessively. That's not the reason, because there are three stubs to be connected, is what I understand the sewer department's saying.
Okay.
And it's a fair assessment that if you had three separate lots, as a surveyor, you know that each of those lots would pay separate fees.
That's true, but it's...
And a subdivision.
It's one building with an addition on the top of it, it's not three separate buildings. They're all on the same lot, and it was sold as being on sewer.
Which is why you're here before us, before the sewer commissioners...
Exactly.
...to take a look at that issue. You have your view on it, they have theirs, which is why we're here to discuss, okay?
And I'm fine with that.
So I just want to make sure that people understand what's going on between the town saying, "We want to make sure that we get paid adequately," because otherwise people complain that we're connecting people when they're not, and so on and so forth. So I could see how that could be very irritating to go from $50 to $32,000. I think the board does.
I have one question myself.
Yes.
I don't...I'm not...I'm not very good in all this, but...
That's okay.
There is a pipe coming into the property, correct?
Yep.
And then from the church to the building, there is a T. I don't see any other things from the town. That's where I am very puzzled. There is one pipe coming into the property, the property connected to the church, and from that church, there is a T going to the building. Where now...what is the extra money? I'm sorry, I'm really not trying to be...
No.
But I just want to understand. I understand if it's a whole job coming from the street again to the building, but that's not the case. The whole thing is in our land, everything in our land, no work the town will be involved in it, not right or wrong.
Correct.
So where now...where...why the fees? If I'm using...it's all about the money, the water I'm using, you're charging me. So you're charging me with the amount of water, even if I'm using whatever gallons of water.
Yep.
So I'm going to pay my fees monthly.
We also charge on the sewer because we have to clean the sewer, too. So you're getting for both the use of the water, for getting it, and then also for cleaning the sewage, which is another cost.
Correct. But I'm paying, right? That's why I'm paying this much...I'm paying for the sewage, and I'm paying for the water based on the amount of water I'm using.
Right.
Correct.
But it's a one-for-one. So if you have...take a house, for example. You have a house that's sitting there with one family. You could have 10 people in the family, you could have four, you could have two, you could have a large family, 15. At least you're paying on a house basis. When you have two families, you're paying based on the family, on the lot usage. So conceivably, you could put 10 different buildings on that, and you're still paying one price for all of that. And I think the regulations, the way they're written, is that if...and I'll ask Kevin and Will, but my understanding is because there are different uses that are going to be used there, that's where you're getting charged the additional stub fee, because it's not to one, it's to all the multiples.
May I say one thing?
Absolutely.
The same people using the church... Forget about the addition for now. Let's focus on the building and the church. The same people using the church are the same people using the building, same. There's no... So I don't have two functions going at the same time.
I understand.
So basically, if people using the church, they are not using the building. If they are using the building, they are not using the church.
Yep.
So I don't know if that, if this makes any difference.
No, it makes sense. I understand what you're saying, Father.
But that's basically what, we are not going, like, to have a surface in the church and renting the place for somebody doing its... Do you see...
Yep. It's the same parishioners or the same congregation that's using it, whether they're inside the church or whether they're inside the center.
Exactly.
I understand what you're...
Yeah.
Questions from anybody on the board at this point, because then I'll probably turn to Will.
Just to clarify, so essentially, the sewer department, in assessing your needs for the church rec and the accessory dwelling, said that you would need to have three hookup fees, one of which has been paid by the Archdiocese. One was paid.
You mean the accessory dwelling mean the school?
No, the new house, the rectory.
The new house, we didn't even discuss this yet at all, because it just got approved by the planning. All what we were asking first, it's just the building.
Okay.
So the other, the accessory dwelling...
Is a whole separate?
It's a whole separate, because there was, there is no building. We just got the approval on Tuesday. And that's why I don't see, like, at the time we talked, I didn't see a reason for it. However, I think the planning, the planning department put a condition on the approval to know your decision about now the accessory dwelling. So, yeah, actually, they wanted first for continuation and to hear you. And I said, "But you asked it to wait for the result." So they put a condition. So I think they are two separate.
But the accessory dwelling won't trigger a...
A third, a third, a third property.
I just wanted, because there's a lot of moving parts on that.
Sean?
Also, I think, I mean, that building, the school building, plus the residential we're adding, is considered under the code as a rectory building, which means service for the parishioner, for Sunday School activities, and also the rectory building by code classification is a residence for the priest. So it's actually, is considered by code as one unit. And we only ask for one connection coming to it, which is already there. So to be doubling it, to say for the building down in the bottom, have a connection for $16,000, and the top floor has another connection for another $16,000, it seems to me it's not reasonable.
Sean? I'm a little bit confused. So you're asking, I grew up in that neighborhood. I went to church there, and I went to CCD there. So I played basketball in the gym and brought my daughter...
And you want to come back again?
Well, that was going to be one of my questions later on. Would it be open to, you know, the public for the gymnasium and so forth? But before we, so are you willing to pay for one additional hookup fee?
I can refer that to Father, but he was saying that when we bought the church, the church told us there is one to the side, and it's already been paid for.
Actually, not more than that. They said it is a town sewage. We bought it this. It was advertised. We bought it. And that's why we didn't have Title V. Nobody asked us for Title V, because it was actually listed as town sewage. Nobody mentioned at all Title V. So we are in a position now, actually, I'm not going to open this. This is actually about the Archdiocese. Let's just focus on...
I just have some more questions about the building, all right? So going to CCD, I don't remember there being full baths there. There were boys' rooms and girls' rooms, but I don't remember them being showers and things like that.
In the basement, but they are all disconnected. There is no more shower or anything. Actually, in the, they are very weird. They are concrete, and they just shower.
Would you...
It's all disconnected.
Well, a little common sense, I mean, how much water and sewer are we talking about? We're probably not talking about a whole lot unless you're going to open this up and, you know, and... I had never been in the basement of the church.
It's a very small room.
Right. So you're not talking about a lot of volume.
There's no shower, actually, anymore. They are all disconnected. All the pipe got cut.
And it's not your intentions to...
No, no, no.
The basement is just some...
No, no, no. It's just a very...
A very small portion of the building.
It's not the entire, it's not a full basement, actually.
Did you buy the property across the street? Did that come with it?
No, no, actually, they sold it. They sold it before we... Actually, they sold to us the property based on, that's another, that's what I wanted to say, a 16-point-something acre. And it turns, no, actually, they sold that piece of...
Sold it twice?
They sold it twice, basically. That's, but, and we didn't, I mean, we figure out we are not going to go through any more of that. They said it's a mistake in the real estate and all that. And so we just took it as it is. So it's not actually 16 points, about 14 points something.
Right, okay.
Sorry to bring this up, but I'm just, yeah.
Sorry.
Mora?
Yeah. Good evening. My question was similar to Sean's with regards to the frequency of usage of both the buildings, not being familiar really with your faith and understanding how often folks would be on the property during the week. Is it once a week, twice a week? You know, what is your estimation of...
The surface for the church is actually regularly. There is a mass on Wednesday morning, 7 to 9. And then there is a mass on Saturday, and then whispers and midnight praises at night, 6 to 9, 6 to 9. And in the morning, our mass is two hours, so in the morning from 8 to 10. And then Sunday, it might be a long, like it is from, we start at 8, we have Sunday, finish at 11, the mass. Then we have Sunday School, and then the kids might play there. Saturday and Sundays will be basically some activities there and during the, during the school vacations. I'm expecting to have activities there and keep the kids busy during the school. We have certain times during the year, like the holy week. The holy week, it's all praying, so it's not basically anybody playing. But there are definitely some, some times during the year that we have surface during the week, the weekdays. So I don't know if that's...
No, that helps a lot. Thank you.
Mostly the Sunday School weekly and Sunday for the classes and...
Okay. And then I, Mr. Chair, have a question for Will and Kevin. May I ask now, or do you want to wait?
Hold on one second. I'll just go see if Tony does, and then we'll turn over to that.
Only two things that I just want to remind everyone. A, the Sewer Enterprise Fund is at a deficit right now. So it's not like some of our other funds, where there's a lot of funds there where you can be probably more charitable. And second, my concern is setting a precedent by making a decision here that would then roll out to be used by some commercial entity sometime later. So you buy a piece of property, you put a dry cleaner, a McDonald's on it, and all of a sudden, you know, the same logic of one piece of property, two pipes, why are we paying for two hookups? So that's, I just want to keep that, that's in the back of my mind, so that we don't make a decision here that for the next many, many years, we hear people going back to, "Well, you did it back then." So those are my two concerns. I really want to hear, like Mora's mentioned, Will, and I don't know the guidelines as well as you guys do. I want to hear your rationale for it. And then we'll apply some logic and go from there, I assume.
So any other, otherwise the number?
No, I too would like to hear.
So...
Can we just, before we go to, can we clarify that they're really looking, so one has been paid. There are two more connections, really, that are going into the property, right? And you're looking for relief on one of those two, correct? That's my understanding. I just want to understand, like, where we are with that.
So what they're looking for, in essence, if I'm not mistaken, is as far as the, I call it the parish center, but the school center portion, that you want to connect it without having to pay the fee. The issue with respect to the residential accessory use is not a part of the consideration before us.
It came...
But it is, because of the way the planning board voted.
It is now. It is now, because the approval for the special permit was under a condition that to know your decision about, about. And as Mr. Yusuf said, I didn't, again, I'm not an engineer. He said it is considered to be one building in the code, so.
And so the position is that to waive the two, in essence, connection fees, is what you're seeking?
Based on it is one building.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I just want, you're correct for clarification. Will, Kevin, a rebuttal here or a position?
So...
Can we talk to a microphone?
You might need us to...
Sorry, Kevin.
Can you get them or no? Probably not. We don't want to get into that, other than, sorry. Thank you.
I'll lean in when the time comes.
So first of all, Will came up, Will was originally approached by Father, went out, took a look at the site. The original intention that we thought was going on there is that that was going to stay on the septic system, the recreation building, when they were connecting to sewer. Then he found out they were putting a Y in, in connecting up the other building into sewer too. When he did, he said technically that falls under another betterment fee, because it's a second building. It's considered like an outbuilding. If you had a two-acre lot and built a second house for somebody in your family, you would wind up paying for an additional fee, just like anybody else. So that was the interpretation of it. And then there was an additional one with the interpretation of, Will heard recently that they were going to put a residential unit on top of that, and that's where it came up. It was the interpretation of our sewer rules and guidelines that came up with the two betterment process. And as I, you know, as you know, you're the sewer commissioner.
Can you explain that a little bit, like, read the guidelines, or what does it say?
I love...
Or what's your rationale?
Accessory dwelling or something?
Yes.
Is there a house?
Under Article 3, Section 2 of our guidelines, we have guidelines for residential and non-residential properties. So when we looked at the rec house, there's a calculus for determining the sewer unit fee or the privilege fee for a non-residential property. So I invited Kevin Cafferty out to do a site inspection. The rules and regulations say that the minimum assessment for a non-residential property is one sewer unit, and we determined to assess them at the minimum for the rec building at one sewer unit. At that time, we had asked if there was any intention for there to be a residence or anyone staying or using the facility. At that time, there was not that intention. Meanwhile, the church building, which had already paid their betterment, completed their sewer connection. It installed a Y connection point for if and when they determined if they wanted to use the rec building and have that go into sewer, whether or not their septic system failed down the line or something like that. We were then approached about the accessory dwelling property, which we consider to be a residential use of the property. And again, Section 3 of our rules and regulations specifies that a dual-use property shall consist of no less than two sewer units, and each sewer unit is a complete privilege fee with the current rate being $16,000.
Thanks, Will.
You're welcome.
May I tell you a quick one thing? I have never known that I need two permits to the two, never. When I talked to Mr. Morris, I was under the impression that two things will be in. So I never said we will use... Now, when he came back and he told me, "You have to pay the $16,000," I said, "It's better to leave it on the septic then." I had no clue, not whatsoever. I don't know where it came, that I was going to leave it. Absolutely not. I had no clue, not whatsoever, that it's two separate things. It's one thing connected together until he came and told me, "I have bad news. We have to pay $16,000 to connect to the building." I said, "Why is that?" Because it is two. I said, "It's better to leave it on the septic then." That's all what I said, but I had no, I didn't know anything about this. Period. So...
Did you have a question you want to ask, to Will?
I have a question.
Hold on.
I guess my question was, is there, you know, we have other, are there any other situations in town where we have this, where we've got, like, two completely separate structures coming into one pipe? And how do we assess that?
There are a number of residential properties, anywhere between four to a dozen, that share a connection like this due to difficulties in construction at their particular lots. The residents decided to sign an agreement to share their lateral and put a Y in. As far as non-residential mixed use, I don't really have any examples, other than the dance studio and the river shed. They technically share a line. However, I think the line they share is an eight-inch line under their driveway and not the typical six-inch line that you would find on a lot.
So if I can clarify that, that's because that's the same building. They share the building. And the residential examples that he was using, some of them, there might be an accessory dwelling out back that's part of the project. And just by the rules and regulations, I believe the way it goes is then they're charged a half betterment fee that they pay for that.
When they put an accessory?
The accessory dwelling. I believe they call it a carriage house.
Okay. Thank you.
Sean? And to the point, to the point of the restaurant and the dance studio, financially, they each paid at least, as I recall, didn't they? They didn't pay...
That was before our time. I don't, you may remember. I don't remember what it was.
There was some discussion on that. They didn't pay just one hookup fee. I think they paid at least twice. And they were commercial, so, which is fair. Jeff, the one-bedroom apartment, two-bedroom apartment up above?
Three.
Three bedroom.
Three bedroom?
Yeah.
What do you call an accessory dwelling, one, two, or three-bedroom?
It's a percentage.
Our guidelines are relatively loose for the definition of an accessory dwelling. But typically, anything with a full bathroom would constitute being considered an accessory dwelling for our division. That's how we've been making those determinations. In this case, we defaulted to the dual-use property rules and regulations, because it was combining a residential use with a non-residential use for the property. It says no less than two units for a property like that.
Anybody else?
But he just said that it's being considered as a one-use building, the way it's permitted. And I guess one question I had is, what would they have done back in, whenever this was, when the church first had, when the church was first built and the stub came in? If, was the plan then to tie both buildings in to that stub? Would they have been charged for two separate things?
Well, we can't speculate, because nobody knows what's going on.
Why they didn't? May I? I'm sorry. I'm very bad.
Hold on, Father.
I apologize. I'm very bad. I'm very bad. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I think, you know...
I really have a question. I'm sorry. I'm really sorry.
Go right ahead, because I got a...
Why they didn't build them twice, the two things? Do they have any evidence showing that the Archdiocese refused to pay for the school and paid only to the church? If they do have this, I will, but why they built them only for one?
May I?
I was going to say...
If there is no water, may I clarify something?
Father, hold on. Let's get, let's get the first question.
So we believe the reason why this building was never connected to town property and the reason why it was never assessed a betterment in the first place during the Musquashka Phase project, which is the phase in which sewer went in this area, was that this building is located so far away from the gravity sewer main on Hood Road, that there'd be no way to achieve the minimum pipe depth and slope to reach it with a conventional gravity line. With today's technology, they can use a progressive cavity grinder pump or E1 pump. This pump will be provided by the town as part of their privilege fees for this property, and that pump allows them to move the waste into the sewer system, even though it's set so far back.
Was that already put in for the first line?
The church building, the church proper was close enough to the street in order to have gravity service.
So there's one stub?
There was only one stub. And the other thing that was going on, because that was in the time when the church was sold, it was talk of subdivisions going in there and a street going in there and multiple houses. So at the time, that building, we thought at that time was coming down.
Anybody else?
I just have one last question. You know, why wouldn't you want to keep the back building on septic if it's already there?
Oh, it will, actually, it will cost, I think, a lot of money, because whenever tested, we don't know. Because again, we were under the impression it is town sewage. So I don't know if you bring it up to the code. I have, I have no clue. Maybe the study was...
It's in groundwater now. So if it's in groundwater, it would fail. And to put in a compliance system would be expensive, and it would kind of deform the looks of the property.
Yep.
Certainly between the two places.
I want to apologize. I was just...
No, 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 Father. Don't apologize.
No, 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 no.
I feel sometimes, you know, I used to teach, and when I, I used to be a teacher, and that's how, when I get excited about something, so I apologize for that.
No need to apologize.
Just to give you a little history, Father, that right couple doors down, there's a side street. And the people that have lived in those homes for 50 years, fieldstone, Long Meadow, the soils are very bad, like they are, you know, on your property. Those people would love to get tied in. There was a person in that neighborhood that was willing to try to work with the town to try to get them tied in. So to have, you know, you know, someone come in and ask for a privilege, you know, have fees waived, you know, this is a tough thing we have to balance out. We have to say no to those people. You know, there's not capacity, or it's not going to, just not going to happen. And here we are, making exceptions, you know. And I understand where you're coming from. You thought it was tied in. And I could say to some of those neighbors, when Karen first told me what was going on about the project, I didn't even realize it. I don't live in that neighborhood right now. But some of those neighbors could have been looking at what Kevin and Will just said, you know, maybe six homes or something like that, and who knows, or a lot of apartments. So this is almost a win-win situation for the neighborhood. It's still going to be a church and, you know, remain quiet and, you know, the way it has been for a long time. Probably a lot better than what it could have been. So it's kind of a toss-up. It's...
I may say, again, you're talking, we are a nonprofit organization protected by the law. We're not making any money out of it. So we are different than building houses or whatever that make...
So we are different than building houses or whatever that making money, but that's, the church is service for the community and the people.
So my take on it is this. Personally, since the stub wasn't put in, I really don't think we should be charging for the additional use of the parish center, because regardless of whether it was gravity or not, when we were going through it, we were looking at lots that potentially could come online. So I don't, I agree with the parish center not having to pay an additional fee.
Could you explain that again?
Sure. When they went and they designed the sewers for the Musquashka Pond area, I think that's when it was put in, wasn't it? Or was it put in during the hills? I forgot when. Okay. They only gave them one stub for the church and the parish center, and my feeling on that is, is that's what was deemed at the time, and I would agree that, you know, there's no need now to turn around and say, well, now that they can actually push sewage, now we're gonna charge, and my feeling is, they didn't do it at the time, I would agree that, you know, they were assessed, one, it was paid by the church, not by this church, but by the predecessor. But I do have a problem with the accessory, and I'll tell you why. Because the church, the predecessor had a rectory. That rectory got charged for a stub, and that rectory was for habitation. So I'm kind of stuck right now saying that you certainly shouldn't be paying the 32, but I am stuck with the 16, the additional 16, because you're gonna be living there. And so I'm looking at it saying, because there's an added use now that's going on there, I'm not inclined to say waive the entire 32,000. But that's how I'm looking at it. I will agree that, you know, I can certainly make an exception, or not exception, I can certainly suggest that there is a difference between a commercial, a residential, this is a, it is a church, it falls under a different category of a charity that I think is something that's unique, and certainly this board as commissioners can certainly carve out and say this is the exception to what would be a commercial or, you know, further residential. So that's how I'm looking at it.
Just one question for you, John. So what makes you think that they, or only counted as one? I mean, they weren't open, they had no mon, they didn't want to invest any more money in it. They probably just ran one up here because they knew it was gonna increase the value of the property at some point in time, but it doesn't, I don't know why you would think that they only counted-
Because the buildings were there, and so when we go down, like I know that there was a lot down on Third Cliff that was, hadn't been built on, but we knew that it could be. They put a stub there, and they basically said, you're gonna pay the betterment regardless of whether a house goes up or not, and actually, the house ultimately did go up.
But what if they were gonna put two houses there?
Then they would have had to probably have come back and-
But they didn't, you didn't say to them upfront, well, that's two, so you're gonna pay two betterments. I mean, they only took one, because that's all anyone would ever do if they were gonna build one house or 20 houses.
No, I think the reason was, the one that I'm talking in particular was, I'll get the streets clear. They could only build one house, right?
Before May. When Weston and Sampson laid out the lines, if they came across a buildable lot, they put a stub there. I don't believe the owner paid a betterment until he wanted to build on it, okay? The stub's there for future build-out.
But a stub for one, not a stub for five or 10, if you could have built 10 on it.
Right, they should, maybe you would have thought that, in that case, 10 stubs.
Right, which you'd never do.
And the only reason why I'm saying is, they knew the existence of the parish center, and they didn't put two. If they put two, then I'd be saying, well, then they knew that there were gonna be two different uses there, that's all. Now granted, I know Will's saying that septic existed and there was this idea of gravity, but my feeling is, you know, so that's how I'm looking at it. Anyone else?
I don't have anything else.
I agree with you, John. For the same assessment.
So I would, there's no way we can not charge one more for the residents. You know, I think that it's really whether we want to give the third one for free, which opposes the guidelines that Will just mentioned. So I think it's, you know, I think it's something we have to figure out, whether this is something that we can afford to do, and we want to set the precedent for doing it in the future, because there will be another situation that is gonna refer to this, that says, you know, you did it for them, do it for us. And that's my biggest concern. I understand you're a nonprofit, I get it.
No, no, no. But I would say-
Let me just finish, and then, you know, and I'm not looking to stick, I mean, if there was anything that seemed like it was, that doesn't seem any reason, except the fact that you bought a piece of property that you thought had more hookups, or hooked up the whole property as opposed to one building on it, and that's not the case, that it's not like we're misreading something, or the logic doesn't make sense, or anything like that. I mean, that is what anybody else on that property would have to pay if they were doing it, the same thing as you were doing on the property. So I feel bad that you bought a piece of property that had one hookup and you thought it was for the whole property, no matter what you did on it, but I don't think that, I'm having, most of the situations when we come up to this, there's like some logic to it, where it's like, okay, but this doesn't make sense type stuff. I don't see the piece of this where it just doesn't make sense. I understand that if a charitable organization, a church, love to give you my, love to give everybody whatever we could, but I just am having a problem with that. And that's, again-
I have just one comment about what you said. If there's no buildings at all, and they build it in, you have all the right to charge them. I don't see really, I see it as very reasonable to charge for the apartment, to be very honest with you, except what Mr. Yusuf said, it is one building, they consider it in the code as one building. But still, it's a new building, it's a new apartment coming, so I have, logically, I can see it, it is very reasonable. But the building itself, this existed, and they never charged anything. It's a big difference than the example you gave. There is one, there is a piece of land open, nothing on it, they build it in, and you have only one, so you charge them for that. Do you see what?
I hear what you're saying, but if they had ever gone to hook it up, they would have been charged two.
Yeah.
If they ever went and actually did hook up the two buildings, Will would have said, you've gotta pay two because it's too-
His rationale, according to what I heard, it could be, it could be, looked at it in a different way. In the future, this is an existing building that could be connected to the sewage, so...
I don't think, I think we're making-
I see what you're saying. I understood, I understood now what you're saying. I understood what you're saying.
Yeah, so I just-
I understood, I understood. I'm sorry, I missed it. I understood.
So how do we want to do, I hate to say it because we got a really aggressive agenda, and I don't mean to give you less time, it's just, I think we've kind of covered everything full circle. You understand the concern that we have as a town, as a board, having to make sure certain things, that's what we're looking at.
So someone make a motion, and let's-
I will. I move to waive the sewer privilege fee for, of $16,000 for one connection of two proposed at 2731 Hood Road. Is that confusing?
So they'll pay for one and have-
Because you already paid, did you already-
Yeah, one's already done and paid for.
We don't know if we'll pay for the new one.
The new accessory dwelling on top of the gymnasium.
So instead of not 32-
But 16.
16.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. Any further discussion?
No, I'm good with that motion.
Anybody have any questions from the audience, aside from our members here? Anybody? Okay. Yes, you have a question? No?
No.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Do we have a second?
Sean seconded.
Mr. Harris seconded. All those against signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay. Four to one. We will waive one of the two fees, okay, gentlemen?
Thank you very much, and again, I'm sorry if I-
Father, you were fine. I wish I had more people in front of us like that, believe me.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Will, thank you so much, because you did a great work on this.
Okay, let's do the next one, which happens to be the generator installation. We're going to postpone that because there was an emergency with one of the individuals, Kevin Kelly, so he's not here, so we're gonna move on to the 710 discussion vote approval of the collective bargaining memorandum for agreements for the AMP, TOSCA, Police and Fire. AMP is the administrative managerial and professional union. TOSCA is, now that one I forgot.
Town and Situate Clerical Association.
Town and Situate Clerical Association. I just want to make sure everybody understands what these are, so you're dealing with the unions here in town, both from the people you meet, as well as the ones who are in the department heads. Good evening.
Evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So this has been a long project.
Yes. So we've come to an agreement with all, well, four of our five unions, the one union, the laborers' union, we already had an existing contract, so this would be for fiscal year FY '18 through FY '20.
This is the first time, that's what, you're getting, that's okay.
He was still aside.
You're doing better without him, I'd say.
So we get all four contracts, same standard cost of living increases, 1.5 for FY '18, 2% for FY '19, and 2% for FY '20.
And that's consistent with the laborers too, right?
Yes, correct.
And how does that, we don't know how that factors with the schools, do we?
It's also consistent with sort of what the standards we're seeing surrounding talent as well, it's pretty, 2% generally is what we're seeing. So again-
Sorry, I interrupted you, go ahead.
Okay. So a few additional longevity steps, I think, with each of the contracts. Obviously, the specifics differ from contract to contract, but that's the other sort of consistent theme that I think you'll see in those MOAs. Few other things, granting three days sick time for a member who is using it to, using time to care for a family member. So typically, you wouldn't be allowed to use sick time unless they're sick themselves, so we've sort of extended that benefit to care for a family member as well.
So now three additional sick creators, three of their primary bodies.
Good. You might want to just move that over to the center, to the two of you. There you go. Go ahead. Right there, fine, thank you.
So, do you want me to go through the entire contract?
Yeah, just kind of like some of the differences, that's all, so that people understand.
So one of the things that we, previously, we had communication specialist dispatches were separated into two different unions, the fire and TOSCA. With these contracts, we've actually integrated the communication specialists all under the TOSCA contract, so they're out of the fire contract at this point and into TOSCA. We actually chose to regrade the communication specialist, so they've actually been bumped up a grade. We did some comps and determined that they were a little, they were lacking to some degree, so we're able to do that for them.
And that's a problem, because we could lose them to other areas that we'd be paying higher, and so we're trying to retain-
Absolutely, right.
The quality.
Right. Yeah, we've had some turnover in that position, so, yeah.
Okay.
Few other general changes, we've looked at changing the sick leave bank, again, some of these are, the system that we have, it differs from contract to contract, but with TOSCA, for instance, we, there was a system in which people could donate one day per year to the sick leave bank. It was somewhat problematic to kind of keep track of that, because, I mean, you literally, it's going back 20 years that we've been doing this. How many days are in the bank, you know, who's contributed, who's in, who's out? That's been somewhat difficult to sort of, to monitor. So what we've done is, we've actually created a voluntary sick leave bank, so if someone reaches a point where they've exhausted their sick time, they need additional time, other members of the union can actually donate that time to them. So we've gotten away from this, the need to sort of, to track that time, and then only people who are eligible, who actually contributed time would then be eligible. So this actually sort of broadens the people who are eligible for it, so that's a change we made with both TOSCA and with our AMPs. I think with, so I pretty much covered most of the changes to TOSCA with AMPs. There was a number of positions that we actually added to the bargaining unit. We added positions like communication specialist manager, we have the new assistant water superintendent, assistant board of health director, so these are all new positions that we've added to the, to that bargaining unit.
There are also a couple of positions that weren't actually on our scale. So we have an assistant recreation director, the recreation director was scaled in one union, the clerical staff was in another union, and the assistant recreation director was not mentioned in either contract. But obviously, they're both in a union, he's supposed to be union, so we had to find a place for our home for that position, too. There's a couple of those out there floating around that we had a finer home for.
Okay.
We, there was a request from the union, the bargaining team, to reclassify a number of the positions in AMPs. We did some comps on some of those requests, some made sense, some didn't. So there was a few positions that we ended up sort of reclassifying, like the rec director and the harbor master, for instance. So it's a few positions that were reclassified.
The harbor master actually wasn't reclassified. He was being paid at a different grade than what he's actually classified at, so all we did was make his title match the grade he was in. So he was hired for a grade higher than what the contract called for, so all we did was make it match.
So are the reclassifications are essentially a raise to all those people? Correct. Right. So there's seven of them, I see? Five, six, seven? Yeah, seven, right. And the AMP one? Right.
Yeah, well, the assistant water superintendent is new, so that's not a reclassification, that's a classification. That didn't exist before.
Just making sure.
You know, I talked to a couple of board members, they'd asked for the status of hiring the health director. The first go-around, we had very few applicants, and the applicants we had were not ones that met the full requirements for the job description. So we went back out, we did a salary survey, and realized that we were significantly underpaying what we were looking for. So that had to be reclassified, we've reclassified, we've gone back out. I think at this point, we're seeing a much better quality of applicant coming in for that position. It's a position we gotta get filled in, all right?
Right.
So Bob, Bob really did a lot of work on looking at comps, establishing comps and going across, you know, it wasn't one or two towns, 10 to 12, that he was going and finding comps for all these positions. And we try to stay in the general geographic area. You know, if someone wants to go work at Linfield in the North Shore and do that commute, that's up to them, they can go ahead. We're competing with the towns down here, and we want to make sure that we're competitive, so not only do we attract people, but once we attract them, we keep them.
And with all of these comps, have we brought everybody up to level, or just closer to an average? Where would you, what was your estimation?
I would say that they're at the correct level at this point, for the comps that we had done, yeah, for the reclassifications we had done.
And then there's a step increase as well, right? Was that in the AMP, you added a step?
So, yeah, in AMPs, there was an additional step after 20 years of employment, but that also, we did the same thing with, in TOSCA, so in TOSCA, there was a, an increase at a 20-year step.
Oh, I thought I read a 10-year one.
Police and Fire were 10.
Okay.
Yeah, police and Fire were 10, and, right.
So we've added a step in every contract?
Correct.
And we've reclassified positions in every contract?
I wouldn't say, I don't know that we reclassified a position, oh, I guess we did in TOSCA with the communication specialist, correct.
We found on these salary surveys that we were not only below average, but on the low end of below average, significantly in some cases, $2, $3, $4 an hour, we were paying less. Communication specialist was barely glaring when you looked at what they're paying over in Hingham for the combined dispatch. It's the exact same job, the pay was significantly higher. So these people, it's not a job I'd want to do, it's hard work, it's tense work, it can be very stressful, and, you know, if you get a chance to make $4 an hour doing the same thing 10 minutes down the road, you're gonna go. And if we don't have people who are qualified that can do that job, then the police and fire, I can be able to go out and do their jobs, and it becomes very problematic, so. You know, again, Bob did a good job on the comps, but it was, that was one that really jumped out at us going, wow, that's just significantly less than what we need to pay to keep people.
Good. So with fire, again, the same colas, 1.5, 2 and 2, 10-year step for firefighters, and a five and a 10-year steps for the officers, for the lieutenant and captains. We made some change to the ambulance recall language, where we were having some difficulty getting firefighters to return- getting firefighters to return in the event we actually...we were short-staffed and we wanted to man the additional ambulance. So we changed that language so that if they did come back, even if they worked for a short period of time, they would be guaranteed four hours' pay. We put a sort of...the caveat in the MOA that we would actually do an evaluation for a year to see whether or not that really changed our callback percentages, and if it doesn't, then we're actually going to revert back to our current practices, which we just pay for three hours of callback.
If they got called back for one particular type of duty, it was a four-hour minimum. If they got called back for the ambulance, it was a three-hour minimum. And, you know, why would you come back to the three hours on one, when you come back for the four hours on the other? So we agreed to look at it, see what it was going to cost us. It does have sunset language, so if we, at our discretion, decide that it's too expensive or it's not working, it reverts back to the original language, but we want to take a look and see what...see what that happened. And just to jump one step ahead of Bob, the other thing we had to do in the firefighter's contract is we increased what we paid to the paramedics. Chief Murphy's been in a couple times. The list comes out, there's five paramedics on it, they're interviewing in Situate, Noel, Hingham, Moshfield, Cohasset, Duxbury, Pembroke. They're interviewing every single town around here, and it's just a skill set that there's not enough people right now. So in order to attract those people and keep those people, again, we did the comps and, you know, those guys are...you can't put a price on what they can do if they show up at your house and you need them. So it's important that we get them, that we train them, and that we keep them. We did actually just get a fully-trained firefighter from another town who actually was in a non-civil service department and took the civil service exam to come to Situate. And we snapped him up. We knew he was interviewed a couple of places, and we interviewed him and made him an offer before he left the building, because we knew how important it was.
Sean, quick question. When we pay a four-hour minimum, they work the four hours, right? They just...they know that they're going to be here for four hours instead of three? Or how does that work?
Generally, they are, but it's not. If they get cut loose at three and a half hours, they get four hours. If they get cut loose at three hours, it's three hours, but they get a four-hour minimum to commit.
So are they coming in for like an accident that's going to last four hours, or how does that work, kind of?
They're getting called back because the ambulance is gone, or the other trucks are gone, and we need someone to staff the second ambulance while everybody else is out of town. So generally, if everybody's gone to the hospital, that's going to be four hours. By the time they get there, drop off, do all their paperwork, clear, and come back. So they're there...otherwise, guys just don't come back. They're not going to come back if they're going to commit for an hour. By the time they get up, get out, get dressed, get in, it's, you know...I don't mean to say it to them, but it's really not worth their time to commit for that.
No, no, to Tony's point, they're not coming in for half an hour and getting paid for four.
Generally, no, no. Not for...for the callback, that means the guys are going to be out of town for a significant period of time, and that's why they call guys back. If they're just running someplace and coming back, and they can get back, they wouldn't do a callback. But if they can be tied up at South Shore, then they would call guys back to man the second ambulance.
These salaries and positions are incorporated in the fiscal '20 budget?
There may be some adjustments, but...
Lower.
Because where we thought we were with the contracts, we made estimates during this, so, you know, as I said, we might have to make some adjustments.
So they're all retroactive to cover FY18, 19, and 20?
Right, and different things go into effect at different times.
Right.
Like the step increase that we made, those retroactive, so we wouldn't be stuck with big retroactive payments. So a lot of those are coming up, that they get those in the next fiscal year, as opposed to going back. And so we tried to recognize that we needed to get them to a point where we were competitive, while at the same time, the town wasn't going to just write a giant check to pay back wages for a lot of this stuff.
So typically, when we go over these, we get a sheet that says what the complete financial impact of the contract is? You know, it adds in the $200 for this, and the 2% for this, and the one step. Is that...
First time, Tony, I can get you that if you want?
Yeah.
First time.
I don't know if anyone else...it was kind of helpful for us just to look in what other ramifications.
But you're right, we didn't mention that until right now.
You want to do the police, and then...
Yep. So police, again, similar, same one and a half, two and two. Some, you know, a few minor changes on, you know, the...what we pay out for our police details, or what actually is the going rate for police details. A few changes to the clothing allowance, longevity, shift differential, officer in charge, changes in addition to also what we pay out for fitness and wellness standards. Some of the other changes, again, just like, again, minor, relatively minor changes to grievance procedures.
The fitness standard is...there is a fitness standard in the contract. I think that's really important, that people are fit. That's not on the 111F, the injured on duty. So what we did is we made it twice a year to make sure they're staying fit, so they're not just training for a month until they pass this. So if they pass it twice, they get paid both times they pass it, and then I think there's a provision in there that if more than half the department passes it, then everybody who passes it gets another.
Nice, good incentive.
60%, yeah.
So we're encouraging not only, you know, Bob to stay fit, but Bob's going to get on me to stay fit, because he wants to get the extra bonus again. So I think that's real important, and I was glad that they went along with that. We also put in some changes in both contracts on how we do 111F, which is Police, Fire, Injured on Duty. They don't get workers' compensation, it's under Master General Law, Chapter 41, Section 111F. So we put some language in to change how that's reported, how they have to track it, what they have to do on that, and also some changes on our sick leave, how they can account for it, what they can do, and what the penalties are if they...if we think that they're abusing sick leave. We thought those were important going in, and we held out to make sure we got the language that we were looking for, at least as close as we could, so we could deal with those issues if and when they come up. You know, I like to tell the guys, 99% of the contract makes no difference to me, makes no difference to you. A contract protects good employees from bad management, and management from bad employees. But for most of us, it just determines when you get paid. But we need to address, you know, those outlying areas so that we're protected, the union's protected, and I think we were able to accomplish a lot of that in these contracts.
Good. All right.
One of the things...two other things I could. The negotiations were good. Sometimes they get heated, sometimes we all get angry, but I think the unions all worked with us to get these done. I think we all bargained in good faith, and I think in the end, we're all a little bit happy and a little bit angry. You know, we think we got some stuff, and we think we didn't get what we wanted, so I think everybody kind of walks out saying, "Nah," which is good, but it was good working with the unions. I'm glad we got them all done. I know that hasn't been the history in here, that we've gotten all the contracts done, so we avoided any arbitration, any mediation, it was all done. And I'd also like to give Bob a lot of credit. He did a lot of the backdoor work on this, and also, when I had conflicts, Bob would go in and do the...we'd talk, and he'd go in and he'd just take care of the whole thing. Without me, sometimes it was just Bob by himself with three or four, or five other people sitting across the table with him. So, you know, Bob really did a lot of work on these, deserves a lot of credit. And if they blow up, it's Bob's fault.
Well, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. You know, great job, and thanks for getting through all this, you know, coming in here your first year and getting this done. It was a big task, so we appreciate it for both of you. I think you did a lot of work to try to bring our folks up to a commensurate level with the, you know, competitive towns, so we can keep the good guys that we have and attract, you know, just as good guys to come back in, and women, men and women.
We spent a lot of money on police officers, firefighters, and dispatches, training them and bringing them up to a level of proficiency where they're valuable, and to just let them go someplace else, it doesn't make any sense. It has, I think Chief Murphy's hopped on a couple of times. We have several vacancies right now in the Fire Department, we're anticipating some more, so far, salaries for paramedics, there aren't that many of them. And when that list comes out, every time we commit, where else are you interviewing? I'm just hanging out at Pembroke, and there's all a list of places that they're going to interview, so...
And do we lose many? We're at the losing end, will they say that?
We haven't at this point, Sean. We went back and looked, we haven't lost them, but we're starting to see in the overall marketplace, for lack of a better term, a lot more mobility from people looking to go. So if you're in a civil service department, and you go from one department to another, you lose your civil service seniority, after three years, you get it back. You never get your departmental seniority, but you get your civil service seniority back. So prior to that, you know, guys really didn't want to move, but you're really seeing people move, and it's salary and it's benefits.
And it's a generation, isn't it, too?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the workforce, the younger workforce today is not like our parents were. It's not, you know, you go to work, and that's where you're going to work for the rest of your life. You know, these men and women are in, they're out, they move around, they relocate, so they're a lot more mobile, I think, than previous generations, and they're willing to, you know, if the job looks better all the way up there, they're willing to just pack up and go all the way up there and go work up there. So you have to be...you have to be competitive to keep those people. And again, we spend a lot of time and money on them, they do a great job, they're vital to what they do, so we're going to make sure we hang on to them.
We do, and I just would like to, if I could, John, just, you know, elaborate a little bit on Mara, what Mara had said, and it's usually at the...we're giving the awards, the five, 10, 15-year awards for the longevity and so forth, that we recognize them, but that's...this is what makes up our town, so the job you're doing is...this is our town. We come and we go, but the employees, you know, really what the residents see on a day-to-day basis, whether Police, Fire, DPW, I don't care who it is, and we've all, at times, you know, publicly thanked them, and they, you know, they really do a good job.
They do, and the people that were sitting across from the table, they work hard, they do a good job.
They care.
You know, the ones I haven't sat down with to negotiate with the laborers' union that was done before I got here, but, you know, it's really just trying to be fair. You know, we try to pay them a fair wage, they try to make a fair wage, and, you know, I can't break them, they can't break them, and then it doesn't work. So everybody has to kind of give a little, get a little, and try to make sure that we come to a number that we can all agree on.
Great, thanks.
Just want to say thank you, it's the first time in probably eight years, all five were done. Probably, I mean, it's nine years, so it's nice to know that they were done.
We'll be starting in at about six.
Yeah, I know. Don't go to sleep too quickly. All right, good. We don't need a motion, a motion please. Do we need a motion on this?
Motion to approve the collective bargaining memorandum of agreement for AMP. Can I just make it all one motion?
Yep.
All right. A motion to approve the collective bargaining memorandum of agreement for AMP, for TOSCA, for the Police, and for Fire.
Motion by Ms. Curran. Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bob, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
So, moving on to the next agenda item, it's supposed to be at 7:20, and seeing that it's like two minutes to eight, what I'd like to do now is just say, let's take a break, and then we're going to go straight to the award, the bond anticipation note, and then we're going to hit the budget for the treasurer right away, so you can leave, Pam, and we'll take care of that. So right now, let's take a five...10-minute break? 10-minute break?
Seven.
Seven. She'll be back in seven, we'll be back in 10. All right, so let's just...
Stop with that, we're scared.
And bond anticipation note, treasurer, the town, Pam, how are you, Pam?
I'm well.
Thank you for waiting with us and going through this. So what are we anticipating as a bond and the good news?
We have a bond and a ban.
Good.
Two, because Situate doesn't do just one thing, we do two. So, the town received competitive bids for...from bond and note underwriters on Thursday, January 17th, for a $7,685,000 20-year general obligation bond issue, and an $8,596,312-day bond anticipating...anticipation note issue. Raymond and James Associates, Inc. was the winning bidder on the bonds, with an average interest rate of 2.62%. Jeffries, Jeffries LLC was the winning bidder on the note, with a net interest cost of 1.78%. The town received a total of five bids on the bonds and six bids on the notes. I can see John making a funny face, probably because my note, on...my amount on the bond is different than in the press release.
Eight million?
And that's because we received $724,000 in premium that we put towards the projects, which reduced the cost of the bond.
Good.
I've listed the various projects financed on the memos I've given you. As I said, the paramount of the bonds have been reduced by the premium received and less than net cost of issuance cost. We also took that into consideration. Prior to the sale, we met with Standard &amp; Poor's Global Rating, which is a municipal bond credit rating agency. They affirmed the town's AA+ rating and assigned the SP negative 1-plus rating to the notes, which is the highest short-term rate attainable. The rating agency cited the town's very strong economy, strong management, with good financial policies and practices, strong budgetary performance, strong budgetary flexibility, and a very strong liquidity as positive credit factors. So we did very well, I think, with Hilltop Securities and myself, Nancy, and Jim, with Standard &amp; Poor's, was very impressed with how everything went and how fast we did it. I think the competitive bids of having five and six are huge. That's showing that Situate bonds are, you know, very well-taken in the marketplace. All of the bids were very close, which is, again, really good. The coupon rate for the bond was 5%, but with the premium and everything we got, the net interest cost is 6.2.62%. And the same with the ban, the coupon rate was 3%, and we got it down to 1.78%. So I think that it was better than Nancy and I had thought it was going to be. I'm really pleased by it, and I think she is too, and I think Jim is too.
Good job, good, yes. Questions from the board?
Just one note, the S&amp;P report was great. I mean, said just stellar things about our whole financial department, so it was awesome, except for the one thing, the one thing we could do better. The OPEB thing was the only thing that they said, and we're all aware of that, so...
And just another thing to bring into it, they're looking at, you know, our foreshore, what we do to protect ourselves against the storms. We really hadn't, Nancy and myself, being here for the five, six years, and borrowing, had never really heard that come up before. It seems like a new issue that Standard &amp; Poor's is asking, but, you know, we protect ourselves with our stabilization funds and, you know, all of the things we do for our storms to budget for that, and I think they were impressed with how we do all that.
Good.
That's interesting.
Maura?
I agree, there's a lot of great commentary on Standard &amp; Poor's, especially as we move forward, looking at a lot of upcoming projects in the next coming years. Can we get this S&amp;P rating up on our website? I think it would be really beneficial for folks to read, the great financial management and planning that, you know, all of you and your staffs do to keep us liquid like this, and to continue to get these great ratings, so, thank you, all of you, because we know there's a lot more coming before us, so this is great news, thank you.
I'm privileged to work with a great team.
No, they are too, working with you, all, it goes both ways, so...
Yeah, we have a good team.
Well, good. All right then, I think we need a motion, or do we?
Well...
Karen has to read the vote.
Review, discuss, and vote, right?
I get to read all of this?
Is this for both?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's combined.
We could just read it once, just Karen making the motion, and then have it separated and read it twice. So read it first, though? Alrighty. I, the clerk of the board, selectmen of the town of Situate, the town certified at the meeting of the board held January 22nd, 2019, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted the sale of the $7,685,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2019 bonds of the town dated January 30th, 2019, known as the bonds, to Raymond James &amp; Associates at the price of $8,485,784.20, and accrued interest is hereby approved... at the price of $8,485,784.20, and accrued interest is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on January 15th on the, of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at their respective rates as follows. Do I need to do the whole table? Okay. 2,020, 660,000, 5%. 2,021, 620, 620,000, 5%. 2,022, 570,000, 5%. 2,023, 5,000, 530,000 at 5%. 2,024, 485,000 at 5%. 2,025, 480,000, 480,000 at 5%. 2,026, 475,000 at 5%. 2,027, 465,000 at 5%. 2,028, 450 at 5%. 2,029, 435 at 5%. 2,033, 10 at 5%. 2,031, 310 at 4%. 2,032, 295 at 3%. 2,003, 2,033, sorry, 295, 295,000 at 3%. 2,034, 295,000 at 3%. 2,035, 2,000, 295,000 at 3.125%. 2,036, 295,000 at 3.125%. 2,037, 180,000 at 3 1/4. 2,038, 120,000 at 3.375. 2,039, 120,000 at 3.375. Further voted to approve the sale of $8,596,000 general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated February 1st, 2019, payable December 13th, 2019, the notes to Jeffries LLC at par and accrued interest plus a premium of $90,775. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, preparation and distribution of notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated January 10th, 2019, and the final official statement dated January 17th, 2019, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer to be hereby, to be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of the sale and notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated January 10th, 2019, and official, final official statement dated January 17th, 2019, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant events disclosure undertakings in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2 through 12 in such forms as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes as applicable for the benefit of the holders of bonds and notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and notes. Further voted that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary, convenient, to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public and that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the date, time, placed date, time, and agenda of the meeting, which agenda included adoption of such vote, above votes, was filed with a town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located on, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the attorney general as set forth in 940 CMR 2903, Section 2, Sub B, at least 48 hours, not including Sundays, Saturdays, and other legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of bonds or notes was taken in executive session in accordance with General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 80, 18 through 25, as amended, dated 22nd, 2019.
Motion made by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Having read it into the record. Thank you.
Next, budgets. You don't get rid of me yet.
Let's get to our budget. No, we're going to move on right now. So, everybody grab their budget book, and then turn to...
Treasurer Collector.
I have a question before we get started.
Sure.
Does the town or the board of selectmen have the authority or power to waive interest that's accrued for taxes? And the reason why I'm asking is obviously our third quarter's coming on on February 1st, and so I was just thinking about some of the federal workers and their situation, if we're able to waive the interest until they're able to pay it. Is that something that the board could consider?
Well, actually, I've been told that the president of our United States has asked municipalities and other government agencies to take that into consideration. I haven't personally heard of anything in writing yet. I don't know if Nancy or Jim has.
I would say state law, Chapter 60, Section 15, gives Pam the authority to waive up to $15. I haven't heard anything explained on that right now.
I was just wondering, only because, obviously, if they can't pay, there's going to be interest accruing, or just if there's any way that we could...
Well, if, you know, our, our government comes up with something, which I would hope that he would do something about that, we definitely will adopt that.
Could you let us know? Yeah, that would be nice.
And just to know, too, to announce that February 1st falls into Friday. I'll keep the office open as long as I have bodies coming in on Friday. I'll stay late. I don't really, haven't really discussed how late, but I won't close at quarter or 12.
Okay.
You guys might want to discuss that and ask, you know, and think about it and tell me what time to stay open until.
Okay.
And we'll post it. But I want to do that for the residents, you know, to stay open later on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. One or two highlights do you want to share, Pam? Then we can get straight to the numbers, is that okay?
Okay, yeah. I don't know how you've been approaching the budgets, but this is my treasurer-collector budget. The, you know, three main ingredients are the personnel services, the ambulance billing, and the postage. In my budget, as you know, we collect ambulance charges through the deputy collector, and we get charged a fee for the collections, that's in my budget. And I have the postage for all town, all town departments in my budget now. So that makes my postage high. The only other thing I want to say is that it looks like Jim agreed with everything in my budget, except for the printing and forms. He decreased it by $1,500, and that's probably because, you know, we're in munis, we're in munis, and we now have to pay for our forms and everything to be printed. Payroll, we print the paychecks, you know, the, all that kind of stuff, and we have to put them in envelopes and make sure everybody gets a check stub. We haven't gone paperless yet. I, I think Jim and Bob were negotiating some of that and some of the union contracts.
Yep.
But, you know, it's a, it's a lot more work for my department, so I just want to bring that up, too, that they've really buckled down and done a great job. We now do payroll in-house and thank, I also want to thank Nancy Holt for her help in all this transition. But we're now doing W-2s for the first time, which we don't have them quite out yet, but we still have a couple more weeks to get them out. So I'm asking town employees to please bear with us. We now have water and sewer billing in munis, and we just went live with motor vehicle and boat excise tax. So munis is definitely moving forward, and that's about it.
All right. So we're looking at the numbers, Lee, for your, for 145, Treasurer Collector. Department requested about 114, no, I'm sorry, 416,137. Town administrator's recommended 14, 414,637, just a little difference under $3,000. Last year's was 404,522. So it's gone up, but those are the costs that you explained, and it's pretty much agreed upon between the, between the department request and town administrator.
Yes.
From the board?
No.
All right. Well, then, let's move over to the next one, which happens to be tax foreclosures, which is 158. How many did we last year? What numbers did you have for tax foreclosures?
Well, we, for FY 18, outstanding taxes, we, when we got them back from the deputy, there was over 93 parcels outstanding. My department split up the list, my department did a lot of the phone calls for me because I usually personally do it. I do, do, still do some personal people that I keep on the PM list, but my department rocked it. We only advertised 38 parcels, and I've only had to put into tax foreclosure 28. So they did a great job, and I'm really thrilled with that. So, of course, when the tax title lists get smaller, because they've done such a good job on collecting them, it's hard to make the money from collecting them when you don't have as big as a pool. It was $3 million when I got here, so now it's about $700,000, and it's because I just put a bunch on.
Yep.
And a couple of the ones I put on are a lot of money accounts, and I'm pretty sure I'll be able to collect those ones that just went on. And I do have a couple of old ones in the loop that I'm working really hard with now with some attorneys to get those done. Again, we have a lot of people on payment plans, and, you know, it is what it is. I, I try to take whatever they can give me, at least it's something, but if it gets out of control, I give them plenty of notice that it's about time the town steps in. Try to keep all the parcels on the tax roll as much as I can.
Question?
Yeah.
Is 93 parcels high, low, median?
93 parcels, when we get back from the deputy, is pretty average since I've been here. We haven't got it down from 93 to 38, only 38 were advertised out of that 93. We're usually in the 40, 60-ish range when we advertise and when we take. So only to take 28 parcels was, is huge. It might be a little bit more than 28, maybe 32 or something, but it's, wasn't much at all this year. We had a lot of people coming in for collection, so it's, unfortunately, it's the normal people, it's the same offenders, they get out one year and go back in the next.
Oh, interesting.
Well, this budget's pretty, it's level funded. The budget for FY 19 was $39,000, your request was $39,000, town administrator recommended it, $39,000, so no change there. Any questions on this one? Great. Moving over to debt service, which is 720.
So, just a couple of things to point out with the debt. Because we did so well on our bond and ban issue, it may change a little bit. I've discussed it with Nancy, and she's discussed it with Jim today. We're going to wait to see the final numbers and then, I think, go back with all the changes at one time, instead of changing budget items here and there. So this may be a figure that changes, but it won't be worse, it'll definitely be better.
Okay.
Okay? So again, on the debt budget, we try to do the debt smoothing, so we don't, we try to have aggressive pay-down schedules. We're going to try to pay down some debt at the next town meeting. So we try to keep it pretty level funded as much as we can from year to year, so nothing drastically kills us.
So the department, at least these numbers are subject to change, is what you're saying?
They're subject to change. I think the only enterprise fund, well, I list the enterprise fund budget on here. I think the sewer one might change, Nancy.
Sewer and waterways.
The sewer and waterways might change a little bit, because we were lucky enough to get such a, a good premium to decrease the cost of the projects.
So what's the department requesting was $7,514,161, and town administrator recommended that. Our fiscal budget from FY 19 was $7,492,749. So it's gone up about 15, no, actually more than that, about 17 grand, thereabouts, but in any event, this is subject to change, then.
It is.
Good.
Yep.
Questions from the board?
I mean, the way that we look at this, the planning is, what is it? A lot of it is the debt exclusion stuff, so that number's much higher because of that. The number that we look at is how much is going to hit the, the actual budget itself. And if you go to that, the front page of the write-up, it's, it's about 1.2, right? Is that right, Nancy?
Yeah, I think it's more like a 1.5.
Well, not including the enterprise.
No, for the general fund. You also would have short-term interest.
Which line is that? Oh, is that? Right. Oh, the ban's not in there, okay.
Yeah, the ban's not in there, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely lower than what we then forecast, but probably, as Pam pointed out, probably a smidgen of what we had in mind.
Right. All right. Moving on to the non-contributory pension, 910.
Unfortunately...
I assume that we don't have that anymore.
Yeah.
Right?
Unfortunately, that is no longer an item on my budget, because Mr. Patterson has passed.
Yep.
He was our last one.
He was a good man.
Certainly was, yeah.
In that case, then, we're going to move on to 911, which happens to be the Plymouth County Retirement.
And again, Plymouth County Retirement, got us all beclamped, about 8% increases every year, and again, that's not the case here for fiscal 2020, so it's much better than we had thought, and we'll go, go with it. They claim that, you know, they've, their funding schedules have decreased again from 2034 to 2031. So it wasn't a bad increase for the retirement. They seem to be doing well in their investing.
That's good. I'd like to hear that.
The only other thing I like to end, you know, add is, so we give 2% of retirement to OPEB. So, again, we're $80 million unfunded in OPEB. I like to bring that up because we really need to look at that at some point. We'll be doing another actua, actuality, OPEB.
It's scary if you can't say it.
Yeah, can.
Sure.
This year, so we'll, we'll have to take another look at that, but, you know, moving forward, we need to talk about that at some point.
Tony?
Yeah, just a quick comment. So, we've obviously been talking about this since we started. The, the plan is, when the pension gets paid up, which they keep pushing off a year, that that's the money that we'll go on and start paying OPEB. With this being such a low rate, you know, this is only 3% as opposed to 8%, I've been against putting money in OPEB from the general fund, but from this, I don't mind, because this is the, this is the funding source eventually.
Right.
Once the pension gets paid up.
Correct.
So, when we get a good year at this, if there's a little bit more, like if we budgeted more of this, then I'd be inclined to take a little bit more and put in OPEB, you know, when we have a benefit, when we have a, a plus on the pension side of things.
One of the things, when we talk to the rating agency, they're concerned about the aggressive assumptions of Plymouth County's funding schedule. They assume 8%. 8% return on investment. They assume eight percent, eight percent return on investment. And the S and P thinks that that could be aggressive going forward. If they don't make eight percent, our assessment goes out, or they push it out into the future.
We can make that adjustment later. But that's, when, when these things come in, if we, if we think five or eight is a reasonable number, when it comes in at four, I don't have any problem bookmarking that to OPEB.
Well, I think, you're correct. It's, it's a number that, well, it's an, the OPEB, we're gonna have to start focusing on, you know, because I mean, if they keep pushing it out to 2034, that's, and beyond, that's a major problem, because then you're, you're delaying the OPEB payments. But I'm like, it's not that we're ignoring it, because we're not the only town in this situation. Jim says, you know, this is assuming that we go out of business as a town, and the town is not gonna go out of business. But the liability is there, and that's something that we, we need to begin to address.
The liability's there, and we work, you know, financially, we work really hard, so we don't wanna lose anything on our rating either, because we have a lot of projects coming up in the town, obviously. So we wanna be able to get, you know, a good rating from Standard and Poor's, we wanna keep that. We worked hard to get it, and we wanna keep it.
We have a great rating.
We do.
Yeah. And a great report that just came out, so.
So our number here from the department, it was four million, nine hundred seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. That's the same amount that the town administrators recommended. We budgeted a year ago four million, eight hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. So obviously, we're budgeting more, and obviously, sooner we're able to pay for that, the sooner we can begin to focus primarily on the OPEB.
And we pay for it in one shot, we're lucky we do that. So we save the town about ninety, well, about ninety-four thousand dollars in not paying it into settlements, we've been doing that.
Just started doing that, didn't we?
Uh, no, we've been doing it now about five years, five or six years, I think.
I think longer.
Any other questions?
So I do have one quick question. So do you think that number's not right, Jim?
The one that's in there? No, that's correct. Budget number?
For FY twenty.
Yeah, that's correct, but the 2029 funding assumption is subject to change going forward.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to the next one then, which is the contributory insurance, that's 914.
Yeah, so this is our health insurance. Again, what Jim brought up today, that it looks like we're going to do much better than we had estimated. We had put in eight percent hike in our budget, and it looks like we're gonna fall under, under five, right?
That's great.
So again, like I said before, with the debt budget, Jim and Nancy and I all get together in the Financial Forecast Committee meeting and come up with new figures for both of those accounts, but that should go down.
So now that this is subject to change, because it's gonna go down, but department requested six million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, fifty-four dollars. That was what was recommended by the town administrator. Based on our fiscal budget from 2019, we were at six million, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, so gone up significantly by about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, thereabouts. But now, hopefully, with the percentage going from the proposed eight percent down to less than six, it'll save us some money. Good.
Yep.
But isn't this only a three percent increase in here?
Eight percent.
Questions?
And we're below, we're below the max of five percent increase per Maya.
Is that gonna impact co-pays and things like that?
So Nancy, I did the math again, it was, so eight percent from what, this, not from last year's budget?
Eight percent based on the rates from last year on the active plans, and then the Medicare supplementals are two percent, and that's about forty percent.
All right, but the total...
Sixty percent of our users, we estimated an eight percent increase year over year in the rates.
So are there less people, because the numbers from last year to this year's are three point nine percent?
Right, but we're going by actual enrollment, so we don't assume we'll have the same number, so there would be some play in that.
So this may be high, last year's may be high?
Yeah, we have the full spreadsheet by plans that I can certainly hold on to.
If you just make sure it's, if, if last year's number's high, then that would make sense, but the increase over last year's only three point nine percent.
We'll take a look at it again when we get the final numbers.
All right, finally, taxes, federal, 916.
So we did a seven percent annual increase over FY nineteen's budget, due to the collective bargaining agreements and the settling for cost of living raises for the last three years. So it's kind of a guesstimate, so we feel good about the seven percent increase, because Jim agreed with me.
So your request at seven hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars, town administrator agreed with you. It's an increase from the last FY nineteen budget, which was seven hundred and three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, but because we just negotiated settlement on a lot of these agreements, there are gonna be some other increases there, which is the reason why we need the increase here for the federal taxes to pay them.
That's correct.
Questions from the board? Saying none? Pam, thank you very much. Please care of your time here.
Another break.
There you go. All right, so we're gonna move over to discussion, the water update. I see Sean here and Eric. Come on up, because I know you're supposed to be, we were gonna have you here last, last week, two weeks ago? Was it our last meeting? But I decided to bump this because of the scheduling we had the last meeting, but also, we thought it was important to see if there's some more updates with the water treatment plant, since last we spoke with you folks. And hopefully, you can give us a little update, and not just a little, but actually an update on multiple fronts. So generally, you know, obviously, last time we talked, I wanted to do this quarterly, so the idea is to talk about both from, I know Kevin, you had a meeting on the fifteenth about the reservoir distribution with RFPs going out for continuing the iron, cast iron pipes replacement, ice picking update, water treatment update, what's happening there, and anything with respect to our well that we were looking to get results from, as whether or not it could yield up in the other watershed or aquifer up in Cohasset. So I'll turn it over to you to give us, kind of us and also the public, an update as to where we stand.
We have it all.
Good.
I'll, I'll start off in...
Oh, and also, I want to address the letter that went out, because I know, which came out about the, from DEP, about, you know, the situation that the, all the residents received, we had to send out as a result of the...
Community.
Okay, so the people understand what's going on. Thank you.
So Sean Anderson, the water superintendent, and Eric Langland, the chief operator, here with myself. First of all, this is just perfect timing, because today in the mail, the water department received a water fluoridation quality award for the situat, for the water system. So it's for 2017, but that came in today. So just, kinda cold.
Who's that from?
The federal government.
Okay.
What do we get it, what do we do to get it?
Department of Health, Human Services.
Okay.
What was, what's the award for? What do we get, what do we do?
We put fluoride in our water, and, you wanna explain?
It's, yeah, it's, it's basically, it's for meeting or exceeding adding fluoride to the water and hitting the, hitting the appropriate levels and reporting the appropriate levels on time for twelve consecutive months.
Great.
So they've given you, you know, an award to say that you're doing a good job with the fluoride, encouraging it, the systems that do add fluoride, to report it, and they give out the, the awards.
Eric will take it.
I was gonna give it to Jim, but I keep continuing to do it.
I was gonna say, was this sent during the last or the other shutdown, and that's the reason why it's taken so long, from 2017 here, or?
No comment.
You can't, all right, please, let's, congratulations, let's go.
Okay, so basically, as everybody's aware, we are working on the treatment plant. We've got some major activity going down. We're doing the emergency treatment on well seventeen A, which is a lot of the work that's going on down around the plant. There's a lot of tanks, vessels, piping, water hydrants, if people have gone by there, we had to close one of the entrances to the plant. That's because we have pipes going across the way there. They're wrapped in heat tape, and they're also wrapped in insulating blankets. And what we're doing is, basically, as we outlined before, we are rerouting the water from Tac Factory Pond Road to the treatment plant, and then from the treatment plant, we're running it through a filtration system, the temporary green sand filter system that's set up in one of the off-b buildings that are out there. And there's vessels that are out there that have the green sand in them. It's kind of interesting, they're these giant egg-shaped vessels that the water will go through, and it'll be forced through at a certain PSI, and the manganese will be removed from them. That's going along pretty well. We actually have the DEP out, coming out tomorrow to do inspection of the system, to get us approval to shut down the treatment plant. Anything you wanna add on that? It's putting a lot of, a lot of pressure on these guys, working with these guys, and keeping the plant up, up and running at the same time, and they've been doing a great job of it, but Sean's been losing his mind, no, I don't mean losing his mind, but he's been really, really, you know, busy with it.
There's been a lot of last-minute, little surprises, changes. To be ready for tomorrow's DEP meeting, you need to test all your alarms, make sure everything interlocks, make sure if an alarm goes off, it's all gonna shut down correctly, because we're gonna have to do that live tomorrow with the DEP present. Now, we're doing this all, running the system to waste, so nothing's going into our public water system at the moment, it's all going to the sewer.
Until it's approved by DEP.
Until it's approved by DEP. But there's a lot that has to come together, especially right in the end here. And there was a couple of, a couple of very short delays on getting the right equipment that we needed, and we did have one, fortunately, it was just one. We do have the three mains that are running above ground, that all have heat tape, and all have the blankets around them, but the bitter cold did get to one of the mains and did freeze a short section of it. So that put us back a little bit, because that was, happened to be the, the one main that we really needed to get chlorinated and to get a clean sample for tomorrow's visit, so it just, it put us back a day. We ended up re-chlorinating it today, and we'll actually take the sample tomorrow.
You might wanna, I mean, I don't know, according to the forecast, reading the Boston Globe, this could be really cold for an eight-week stretch. So anticipate, if you had it with this first cold spell, you might wanna anticipate, you might have it again, or it might be a test, that's all.
Yeah, the hardest part of it is that we keep starting and stopping it. I do anticipate it'll get a little bit better once we get approval and start running it full-time.
Start using it, because then you're gonna, you're right, you're right.
So that's going on pretty well, besides that one problem. That one problem falls back on the contractor, use all the costs and everything else from the contractor fixing it and repairing that.
Good.
So that's going up, I think, pretty well. We have well eighteen B, we've got all the equipment set up pretty much there, that's the one near the golf course. That's all been submitted, it's just waiting for final approval from DEP. And then that should be all said also, that one, the main one is seventeen A, is, is the one that goes. And that's, that's giving us, eighteen B is gonna be more of our backup for the extra water. We don't wanna run ourselves short. So included with that, a couple of things that are going on, we had also hooked up two generators. We have two portable generators as part of the project that we do have on site, we've purchased, they're connected up. The good thing about the portable generators, we had a capital plan prior that we were gonna take and connect up a generator. We've got portable generators, so that we can, you know, use them for both projects. And if there ever was something down or a need somewhere else, we'd potentially be able to pull out one of those generators and use to maybe help with a pump station or whatever, gives us some flexibility by having them on wheels. So things are moving along there. The old Okemba treatment plant. So I'm gonna let Sean and Eric talk a little about that, and they can start with the sand filters and the trackback system, also the chemical feed system, and go for that.
So I'll start it off a little bit, Eric has been in direct contact with them. But Aqua Aerobic Systems Incorporated is a company that's gonna come in and do the full replacement for the sand filter. They were slated to begin removing it this week, we never got a firm date that I know of. I'm gonna turn it over to Eric, because he's been in direct contact with them.
Yeah, they, they were kind of going off of the schedule that was in place for the temporary treatment, so that kind of got pushed back, and there, they've got people coming from three different places. So once we, once they start working, that means the treatment plant is offline. So they're ready to go, they're kind of waiting for us to say, okay, send the first crew to start the demolition, which won't be a problem, they're kind of on standby, because once, like I said, once they start, then the sand filter is unavailable for the treatment process, but...
So now that we get the green light tomorrow with DEP saying you can open up the valves, then we can get them there Thursday, Friday, Monday?
It's possible, from the last conversation I had with them, yeah.
We're not gonna get like three weeks or a month, thirty days?
No, no, no.
No, so, so those, just to step on that, there's three different groups of people that are coming up for that, there are some...
Yeah, there's, there's...
New York.
New York, upstate New York, Sudbury has the VAC truck.
Okay.
And then the actual rebuilding of the sand filter, the guys coming from North Dakota.
Tell them it's warmer here.
I spoke to his father on the phone and told him all about what's going on. He said, you kind of have a weather situation there, right? I had to kind of explain to him, it's, we don't really know what's gonna happen until the storm hits the, hits the coast, they don't deal with that out there.
Yeah.
So, but, yeah, they're all, they're basically ready to go as soon as we get them the green light.
Good. So that's generally on schedule then, we're looking at, hopefully, right now, barring any unforeseen situations, once everything's cleaned out, right?
Yep.
We were trying to keep those two very tight, and the delays we had and the bad weather coinciding at the same time kinda worked in our favor, because it kinda pushed it back a few days. And then the trackback system, which is, that's the company Ovivo, that's coming in to put that, that in. That's the system that goes down to the bottom of the said basins. Obviously, they can't come in until we get those said basins drained down, inspected, any repairs made. But everything's been signed with them, they've ordered everything that they need, they're also basically on standby.
Well, they're building the system out as much as they can before they ship it in from Atlanta. So they'll build as much as they can in their warehouse or whatever, shipping in pieces into us, and then when it's shut down, the treatment plant itself, and what we'll do is we'll remove all the sediment, then they go in, after we do any concrete repairs, and install the trackback system. It's a giant vacuum that vacuums the bottom of the sedimentation basins.
Correct.
Is that the time when we know we might have a problem with, like, cross-contamination or leak from one tank to the other?
Well, once we get the sediment down, and, and if you were, if you've driven by the plant, you've also noticed some changes over by the ball fields. There's a whole burned area built up there. One of the things that's gonna go on is the sediment that comes out of the basins themselves, we have to have a drying spot for them. So that sediment's gonna come out, we're gonna stack it up and probably cover it or let it dry, and then dispose of the material as far as that goes, so...
How many yachts would you typically be talking about, cubic yards? And would you have to, would you have to dispose of it, or could it be, would it be good for...
As a dry material, ideally, is what you want it as for disposal. I believe they have the Bowland landfill lined up for the disposal.
That's right.
So I think that was, was it two million?
I forget the figure.
Gallons? In the sedimentation bills?
Yeah, well, each said basin holds two hundred, two thousand?
About a hundred and eighty thousand gallon capacity, but, I mean, different...
Thirty yards of sediment or three hundred yards, I just was curious.
I think we're looking more...
I'll get a guess.
I'm thinking you might be looking three hundred, three hundred yards, you know, three hundred yards. It's, it's undetermined, because it's, it's all coming out flat. It's a significant amount of material down the bottom there, though. So that's ongoing, our plan, obviously, is to have that area all cleaned up before our baseball season. You know, we'd like, you know, we'd better be done by then. Also, Sean's been working on the chemical feed system, which is going on simultaneously, that'll be going, that can go on simultaneously as we're doing the other work inside the plant, which is gonna include taking down one of the outside walls to remove the tanks and bring the new tanks in, so that'll be ongoing. It's gonna be pretty busy down there. And then that includes all the new piping systems, new pumps, and everything else to take care of those main chemical feed tanks. I know I've had everybody in there for a tour on it, but when you go through near the end, near where the chlorine gas is, you see those two big plastic tanks that are about two thousand gallons each, those are the tanks that'll be removed and replaced with, with a different tank and a different containment system. And that'll go up, am I missing anything on the plant?
I think so.
I think we covered most of it, but that's been taking up a ton of time, just pushing it through. We're still within our schedule, because we had some parameters for float time. You know, knock on wood, we don't have any major problems, but we have a lot of the materials that we need on-site. We ordered them on-site and we wanted them on-site, so that they were there, so we have a lot of that equipment all set up and hopefully ready to go. So it's not like the guy from North Dakota comes and goes, you know what, I forgot my, I forgot this, I gotta go back, I'll be back in a week, you know, comes in his truck and drives back. We believe we have everything here that we need for that. Any, any other comments?
Did you want to briefly talk about the turbidity letter while we're just speaking about the plant?
Yeah, it might be a good time, so that people understand what happened and why, you know...
Eric can elaborate a little bit on it as well. Basically, the violation was a, was a monthly average violation, so it's considered kind of a soft violation. That's why the DEP gave us ninety days to do the reporting on it. That's one of the most frequently asked questions that we received at the office, is why, why did you wait to send this notice out? And as you all know, one of the reasons, one of the main reasons we waited was we wanted to, one is that it was just a five-day event and we quickly returned the filtration plant to full compliance. So we quickly resolved the issue by going to one sed basin, as we explained before in a selectmen's meeting. And then we wanted to wait and see if we could get the funding necessary to do all these repairs we're talking about tonight. So we wanted to make sure, we went to special meeting, made sure everything got approved, we got the funding, put it out to bid. That's when I wanted to draw up the language, and I drew, I drew up the language, a lot of it is boilerplate language, that's another thing a lot of people didn't understand until they called. And people were really great to speak to on the phone, I invited people to come in and to see me and to talk to me. When I went through it all, they really understood, and they really felt a lot more comfortable after, you know, calling. It, it's, you know, explaining that it was gonna take some time and, and then the language I had to draw up, send it to DEP, have them review it. Then we reviewed it in-house several times, and then we pulled the trigger. It's unfortunate it went out, when it went out, but it was under a deadline, so I did have to get the, the notice out. But, overall, there was an initial kind of knee-jerk reaction, where people called and thought, you know, hey, I'm sick right now, you know, I think it's related to this, when it's really just a flu bug that's going around. This was something that happened first week of September, first and second week, and it was only just for a few days. And all of our testing, all of our bacteria testing, everything came back clean for the month of September, Eric can elaborate on that. All of our residuals in the system, which mean we're getting a full kill of anything, any bugs, anything at all. All our residuals we get out the system, and Eric takes those out the system as well. Am I missing anything on that?
No, I mean, part of, part of what Sean was saying in terms of the timing, you need to get through the full month to know if you've had this kind of violation, because you, you have to be, there's a threshold for turbidity. And to meet that, ninety-five percent or above of your measurements have to meet that. So until you get to the end of the month, you don't know how many turbidity measurements you've taken. So, that also kind of underscores that in turbidity in and of itself is not a health risk at all. And like Sean said, while that's going on, every week I'm taking bacteria samples. And if it, if it ever did have any effect, A, you'd notice, I mean, we would know the, the kill ratio in the sed basins. You have to meet that every time you run the plant, we were never below that, and then all of the samples taken were clean. So, I mean, I can understand when people get a letter like that, they don't know all of this.
Right.
So they, they, you know, I can understand why they can have these kind of reactions, but it really is something that's, it's only an indicator that maybe you will have a problem, and, and we didn't, so...
Questions from the board on that sub-issue?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the letter said that if you were, had a compromised immune system, or there were, you know, vulnerable people should be cautious during those, I thought that's what it said in the letter.
It's, but it's more that it, it, how do I, I don't know how to explain it.
I wish I had a copy, I brought some of the material, I don't think I have a copy of the exact letter.
Were y'all looking for that, could I, I'll just address a little bit of it?
Yep.
So, one of the things, that's the water from the treatment plant. So, out of the water that the treatment plant was producing that day, we also had probably on power about nine hundred thousand gallons that came from our wells, and the water was all blended also. So, it's not, they're, they're giving you the worst-case scenario too, is if, if that was directly from the, you know, from it, you know, the system is a blended system, so...
They put a lot of boilerplate language in it that you're just required, to put, a lot of people didn't make it far enough down. Under what does this mean, the very first thing it says is turbidity has no health effects.
Should be the lead sentence.
However, I know. However, turbidity can interfere with disinfection, and that's why we stress that we had no problems with disinfection during this whole time.
Good.
Are you allowed to add stuff to that letter, or is it really like a formula that they require?
You can add stuff to it, I was already up to a one full page that I had to do a mass mailing out. So, I didn't, I didn't want to get too wordy on it, I kind of thought that it would be good for people to call in and give us a chance to explain it to them. You know, I did actually have somebody call who does have a, an immune system deficiency. And she was fantastic, I asked her to come in if she wanted to, and she said, no, 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 you've been great on the phone, you explained it very well, thank you. You know, she just wanted to check, you know.
All right, good, that takes care of the letter. I didn't ask the board any questions on the water treatment plant at this point. Anybody have any questions on that, because then we'll move on to the other issues?
I just had, any impact to, you know, with it being cold, water main breaks happening, any, any type of risk with that? Well, do you know, I, you know, I'm just curious.
So...
Yeah, I know.
I gotta, I have a section here.
Actually, with the whole, you know, the whole changeover and whatnot.
With, with the water breaks, with the cold weather, you always risk potential breaks in, in different areas as the cold settles in and the ground settles and moves. Over the past two months, December and January, we've basically been doing a lot of day-to-day water breaks, but they're service breaks. They're service breaks in people's houses on the smaller pipes that go to people's houses. We found a lot of leaks there, and the way we find that, the leaks, is we take a sample of the water, we go back and test it, see that there's fluoride in it, and we know it's coming from our line, and we dig it up and repair the line. So it's, it's a little trick of the trade.
That works.
And it works great. So, we did have one break, there was a collar that they discovered that goes around the pipe and the service goes into. They noticed that was leaking, so they replaced the collar. But there were no significant main leaks, knock on wood, we haven't had any in a little while. There was a break today at the Mill Wharf, there, it's a private service line that goes into the Mill Wharf and handles some of those stores around that area, that broke. As far as I know, they were still repairing on it, we have somebody there overseeing, helping, turning the valves on and off. But that was a private line break. So, any other questions about that?
How about either the Dolanwell, the reservoir ice pigging, your assistance as well as your flushing?
Okay.
All right.
So, I'll just keep on my, on my list, so I don't miss anything. We started interviewing candidates today for the Assistant Water Superintendent. We had two good candidates, two great candidates, one's actually here, Ray came in to just get the water update. And we're interviewing a third, and Bob's finalizing the time for that, and then we're gonna proceed with that and go forward. As I said, we've got a lot of decent, very good candidates that are well, you know, have a lot of experience behind them. Brown water calls, Sean gave me the update on the brown water calls, we had two in December and zero in January so far on the, on the list. Is it correct? Okay. I mentioned the water breaks. One of the other things is the PRV valve, which everybody goes, what's a PRV valve? It's the pressure reduction valve that we awarded to C Norton down in Umrock. That's been installed, and it's getting ready to go online, it has to be chlorinated. And then we also are putting two pressure relief valves on it because of the bends. And then we have to pour the concrete floor, but that's all in, everything's in and ready to go, we just haven't done the final execution of it. One is because of the weather, one, when we had all that rain and everything else, we didn't want to pour concrete floor and have the rain coming in. And then two, with the cold, we've been having a little, you know, we didn't want to do it in this weather, but it's, it's coming up, hopefully next week we're out there and we have that completed. One of the things that we brought up is with the brown water, a couple of the areas, we're gonna look at a couple of the troubled areas and look to add some hydrants. We've completed that, we've got a hydrant on Acorn, and we've got a hydrant on Holly, which were two areas that had a lot of problems. We placed them there, the guys did do some flushing in those general areas, hopefully that improves it, and hopefully it gives us some, some improved efforts to, to get those areas cleaned up during the, you know, during the summertime. One of the issues too is, we noticed Holly Road, the water actually flows down there, the way things are set up, and it goes in two directions at different times of the day, so it changes directions four times a day, morning, afternoon, morning, afternoon, as the tanks fill and as the usage declines. So, in our overall hydraulic plan, we noticed the water on Holly Street goes back and forth, back and forth. So we're hoping we can get most of the stuff with the flushing, but it's just, it's interesting, it doesn't flow in one direction.
Holly is, is that in the ABC streets, or is that...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's really interesting.
What's that?
I was pointing.
That's really interesting.
So it is, it's, it's quite interesting, and that's something we discovered in the hydraulic study. So, ice pigging, we're still waiting to get the quantity that we removed in the lab results, we expect to have that hopefully next week. I spoke to them today just to confirm where it is, we're setting up a meeting with Adam from Suez, who was, he came before the board as one of the men, one of the people that were explaining the whole process. And what we're gonna do is set up phase two of what we're gonna do in our next, our next plan come springtime and get on their schedule, so that we're all set to go for that area.
Good.
They're, you know, they're looking forward to it and will continue. And then, we're gonna have a discussion on it, we may do a couple of the areas on the Driftway again, because it was bad enough that they had said, you know, you may want to do one of these pipes twice, because we had so much material about it. When we did do the ice pigging, and I think we mentioned it, but I don't think a lot of people realize it, one night we had problems with the ice pigging when we shut everything down. We had the system shut down and we were getting a lot of water coming in from different locations. And Sean found out later on that there had been a water break up in that area of the cliff. And what they did is they, they just dead-ended, they dead-ended the pipe, it was never reconnected up on that section, if you want to explain that.
So when you say that, I know, I remember you talking to maybe Sean or Gilson Road, so the pipe should loop, and so there was a break? And they put dead ends on both sides of the pipe?
Yeah, I don't believe it was Gilson, but it's in that same area, there's another feed that goes in. And we were relying on that feed in order to push the, the ice, and we weren't, it wasn't, it just wasn't happening for us. Everybody was scratching their heads, and we ended up shifting gears and going in different directions so that we didn't, you know, lose the ice, we were still able to use it. And then, found out later on from a former employee who's left, that, oh yeah, years ago we had a water main break out there and we didn't have time to fix it, so we just capped both sides, we dug down, cut out a piece of the main and put two caps in, so it doesn't flow through that street anymore. So obviously, that's on our to-do list, on my...
Good for you for finding it.
Distribution crew's to-do list.
We found it the hard way, it wasn't, and when we're doing this, this ice pigging, we do learn a lot about the system. The guys and Sean are learning a lot about the system.
Yeah.
Different gates that work, why, you know, why they work, why they don't work. You know, if something's put in backwards, they figure that out, but it's, it's a trying process, and there's a lot of gates that, you know, maybe a gate should have been on and for some reason it was off. But it's a, it's a really good way to, to get that going. So to move on from that, we had our reservoir meeting last week, or, yeah, it was a week ago, we had a reservoir meeting about increasing the size to that, a public outreach meeting, and had some discussions with that, with North-South River. Overall, I thought that went, went pretty good.
Where are we on track for that, is that still two years away that we're looking at?
We're, we're years away, because we're, we're finishing up the design and then we're gonna go for funding. And one of the sources of funding we're gonna go for is the DM Seawall funding. But the problem is, if we go for reservoir and Seawall at the same time, we're competing against ourselves. They're not gonna give us both, so we'll have to, we'll have to judge that and see how that goes on a, on a case-by-case basis. And we'll keep the board up to speed on that. But where, there'd be a lot more money available for Seawalls, we'd probably follow up on Seaw, you know, we'd push for the Seawalls that have the priority. We, one of the things we were gonna talk about is water restrictions, just a little bit, as we touched it, and I'm gonna let Sean talk about that. One of the things that came up from the reservoir meeting, a lot of people were asking, why are we always in water restrictions? How come, how come we're always in water restrictions? It's people using up all the water and everything else. And, you know, Sean's response is, it's part of our permit and the way the DEP is going, but I'm gonna let him elaborate on that a little more.
Just as Kevin said, as part of our new Water Management Act permit, and DEP is going around and renewing everyone's permits lately, you see it on a town-by-town basis right now. And one of their key goals is, is water conservation, they really want to see that, and they want it in your permit. So we're required to put out those, those water restrictions, it's not, it's, it's calendar triggered, you know, so it's May first through September thirtieth every year, those signs are gonna be up. It just depends on what, you know, which sign, is it gonna be the, just the blue sign saying the normal water restrictions? Or is it gonna be a red sign saying we're in a full ban? The red sign comes out, that one's triggered by the level in the reservoir. So again, that's in part of our Water Management Act permit, and it dictates when we go into those water restrictions.
Yes.
I'm really glad you addressed that, because I think that's a really, a pretty big misperception out there, the public with, why the restrictions are always put into effect. I think it'd be a great thing for our Water Resources Commission to annually put something out to remind people why there are... I mean, I know in the past, when I was the liaison, they did a lot of that proactive communication and to help you keep that top of mind annually, as to why, you know, it's a water conservation effort, really. It's not that we're in crisis, it's to avoid getting it to crisis.
Exactly, yep.
And one of the things, with, with the whole state, I mean, the amount of water that's being drawn from every town, not just Cituate, but the aquifers are getting depleted, you know, they're not recovering as much as they were in the past. So it can't be, that's why they put the restrictions on it, you can't just dig a well and pump five hundred gallons per, per minute out of it and go from there. So they're, they're monitoring that and trying to recover, recover the aquifers as much as possible. That covers it?
Sean, how would you respond to somebody that asks you whether Cituate has water?
I would say that currently, we have more than sufficient water to meet the needs of Cituate. of Situate and future growth, especially given the capital that we're proposing, some of the improvements that we're proposing to the system. It's a matter of, you know, people being reasonable with their water usage.
So, we have a permit to pimp, pump, what is it, 1.5, 2 million gallons a day? How does that?
It was 1.85.
1.85.
Oh, yeah, but you can only use, isn't there a buffer?
Like 90% of it or something.
How do you respond to somebody that says, "We shouldn't develop in this town because we don't have enough money, enough water to, for new residents"? Is that?
That's, I've approached the DEP even about that, and it gets really hard to say no. It's, it's not just a board decision to say yes or no to that. The state has to get involved, and even other organizations have to get involved.
And not that, but from a water perspective, we have water.
We do.
Right? We're conservative about it. We have, our Water Resource Committee has a lot of experts on it, and we have a very strict, very conservative policy on it as well, with our sprinklers and all that other, you know, bylaws and stuff that we have. But, but there is water in the town for people. They shouldn't really worry about the fact that there's not enough water to, to provide the citizens with their needs.
Correct. Yep.
Good question.
In, in the summertime, you know, the reservoir drains, that's, that's part of the deal. But a lot of the capital projects that are going on are designed to supplement that. The Tac Factory Pond, the green sand filter that, that's coming in, into play, that's a, you know, you're looking at probably 250 gallons per minute out of that well under typical circumstances, which, when that gets on, that'll be a huge boost to the, to the system. One of the things that we're doing with this treatment plan is Well 18B. We didn't use Well 18B at all last year, and that's the well that's over by the golf course. We didn't use it because it had high manganese coming out of it. The manganese keeps getting worse and worse there. So, we didn't use that well at all. So, as part of this partial treatment that we're doing for that well system, we're purchasing that material that we're getting for this. And we, that's why we're having a little time with the DEP getting the approval on that particular well, because we plan on keeping those filters so that we filter the manganese out of the well before it goes into the system. So, that's going to be an improvement. And that, that well directly affects, that water flows down to Front Street. And that's one of the issues in the past we think we've had, because there's times when that well starts pumping out a lot of manganese. Sean recognized that, came up with that, kind of came up with that plan, and has been working with this company from Rhode Island for probably five or six months, even, even before we were talking about doing the shutdown on how to get the, the system in.
And it's, I believe it's taken DEP just a little bit longer to get back to us with the approval because it's a permanent installation. 17A was a, you know, emergency temporary. 18 is going to be, once we get this approval and put it online, we're going to be able to use it year-round if we want to.
Which we can still use that well year-round, even though we're putting a lot of manganese out, we're not non-compliance.
That's correct.
But it doesn't make any sense for us if we're ice pigging and doing everything else to just pump like crazy out of that well. Okay, so that being said, talking about wells, we've also been doing work at the Dolan Well. We've been out there. We did a lot of drilling. We drilled some test wells. We did water tests. We did water quality tests, and we did water evaluations on how much water we could get out of there. And that's all submitted with, to the DEP, looking for permit approval, to take the next steps for permitting. So, that's, we're hoping to hear, maybe within the next month, we get some feedback from DEP on where we are with that well, how that's going.
And, you know, if you get approval, what's the timeline?
Well, our, our approval, if we get approval, we'll complete the design for it, and then we'll come back. We, we'll go through the budget process, look for funding for that.
All right.
And then we'll fund it and, you know, build, build, it's, it's actually a well field. It's not a deep well. It's shallower wells. There's a perched aquifer over there that rejuvenates. So, the good thing about that well that was identified years ago is that's kind of maxed out in May, June, July, which is when we need our water most. And that'll be, that'd be a good source of water to pick up at that time. So, that's, that's why that well's real appealing. It mightn't be a well you use full-time, all year-round, but when we're in our dire needs for water, that's, that's the best time to get water from that area. So, that, and the only other thing I had on my list is our next water project is scheduled to go out for bid. We're hoping to have a bid opening next three to four weeks, provided we don't have any issues.
That's for the cast iron pipes?
That's the cast iron pipes. That's Oceanside Drive. It also takes up Turner. We're also doing a lot of the service, relocations on Gannett Road. So, we're taking the services off the cast iron pipe and putting them on the transite pipe. It also has, there is a section of, right by the tank at Creelman, where we're looking at potentially replacing the valves. We've got three valves. They're not working very well right now. So, if there was ever a break over there, we mightn't be able to control it until we drain the whole tank. So, we, we kind of work cautiously around there, to say the least. So, that's going to be one of the areas that we might have to drain the tank and then replace those valves.
Okay.
Which is always very exciting. Also, in that contract is the second pressure reduction valve down in Humrock. We did the larger one, and then the next one's a six inch, which is a smaller one. But we did the most, the one that would take up the most area and be the most disruptive, we did, we did in the winter with the funds that we had.
And that flushing, is there flushing for the spring that you're intending at all, Kevin, or?
Yes, we would definitely plan on flushing. We have to see where we are. We want to make sure the plants are all complete and everything's up running in the plant before we
Makes sense.
set flushing up because we wouldn't want to drain our water sources if needed.
Makes sense, yep.
Hopefully, Suckawood, we, we are in good shape, and we do have a flushing, we are flushing in the spring.
And we'd like to coordinate that with Suez and the ice pigging as well, just to make sure it's, you know, that they work, they coincide with each other well.
Makes sense. Yep. All right. For the update, any questions? Appreciate it, only because, you know, people watching, and you said we're going to do it, and I think it's important for everybody to know that we do, and things are moving along. And when the next break happens, if it happens, people are going to say they haven't done anything. We'll be like, "Yeah, we have. Just got to go back and take a look at the video, what we're doing." So, all right, great.
And if anybody has any specific questions, sorry, you know, reach out to me or call the water department, Sean, and we can get more detailed on it. We could have talked hours.
No, 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 you could. I can tell you that.
Okay.
Aaron and then Maura?
Yeah, one general. So, next quarter, when we have this conversation, it might be really useful. You covered a lot of stuff. For me, it might be useful if you just, even just gave us a quick timeline, and this is what's happening in the next quarter. Real, not detail, because you covered the detail of the conversation.
Oh, okay.
Because there's, you know, there's a lot going on.
And it, and it takes a lot of, it, it takes a lot of effort from, from a lot of our resources. We're putting a lot of resources manpower-wise and, you know, brain power towards getting all this done, so.
Okay. The new guy, right?
I will say, that's not a bad thing to have, like, an update and saying, "Okay, from the next update, this is what's happened." So,
Yeah.
On a timeline, you can see a progression.
Yep.
I only say that because I know from
We know it.
But people have an idea of, like, okay, since the summer, this is what's been going on. There has been progress without some people maybe suggesting something that's inaccurate, which sometimes happens.
Things are moving along pretty steady.
I'll tell you what. I know that you got the Engineering Administration, Highway, Snow Ice, Public Grounds. Do you want to do water first?
Yes.
Sir and Sean have referred us, right?
I'll wait another hour.
My DEP inspection's 7:30 tomorrow morning.
I don't think Eric needs somewhere. He's all set. Unless you want Eric to present it.
Busy day tomorrow.
Thanks, guys. You did a good job.
Thank you.
I mean, do you want Sean here for that, or do you want to do it, Kevin?
No, no, let's do it right now.
So, let's go to 450, please, in our packet.
I don't have 450.
To show you where my, my head has been at, I thought this was Capital tonight. I, I brought both with me, but I thought we were going to be reviewing Capital because I just didn't.
So, all right, we'll catch you
Tomorrow night.
Let's catch you into the
It's way in the back, right?
65.
Oh, 65.
Maybe not.
It's all in the back.
Yep, it is. Very well, because our
Water raise.
Not a lot of, not a lot of changes in my budget.
It's the second one from the back.
There we go.
Well, we don't need to talk about
What you're doing.
What you're doing. We know that.
I should start over.
So, for the water, I got it right here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Department of Water. Yep, total. You're looking at a department request of $5,348,907. Town administrators recommended $5,235,907. So, that's a difference of a little over about $110,000 differential. But it is up from the prior fiscal budget of $4,366,648.
Yes.
Right?
Correct.
And the difference pretty much between Town Administrator and your budget, Sean, is
Positions and debt.
Positions and debt.
It's just in the debt.
Yep.
What are the new positions?
Assistant Superintendent.
Questions from the board?
Just why the debt, why is the debt so different between the budget and the?
A ban that you approved in the afternoon. Seen like so long ago. We're still trying to get financed by Clean Water Trust, so we pitched our bids and went a little high on our estimates.
Great. Okay, that's good.
All right. Sean, thank you. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Let's stick around.
All right.
You wanted to handle the other ones?
One quick question. Does the revenue cover this?
I don't think it does cover it.
So, two point, the revenues propose a 2, 429. Is that right? Am I looking at the right number? No. I'm sorry, 5, 5236.
Yeah.
And this is 5235. We've got a thousand
We covered, yeah. Woohoo!
All right. Thank you very much.
Saving that for an emergency.
Yeah.
All right. Let's get to Engineering at 411.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you. Have a good night. Good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Sean, you're here for this one, I assume.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. This is the board.
So, anything, I know it's 9:30. We've got still some time here, but are there any one or two highlight things that you want to talk about with the Engineering Department that you're kind of proud that you want to at least get out there so that we know, the public knows?
For, for new challenges?
New challenges, or any accomplishments, I mean, between, I mean, the intersection at Hadley and Jericho Road looks great. Great job there.
Yeah, that came together with, with Mike's help in the Highway Department managing that. The culverts for Bailey's Causeway and Gilson Road,
Yeah.
The bid opening for that's tomorrow.
That's excellent.
So, we assisted with the preparation of, the bid specifications for that. Continuously working with FEMA with the many storms from the past. We're still working through Juneau, Sandy, Nemo, trying to get FEMA to consolidate them into a single storm, so that we're not moving three rocks from the first storm and go by three from the second storm. And, yeah, so, we're hoping they're entertaining that. Yeah. Sean, what was the engineer's estimate? Is it, is it public information on Gilson? Just curious. I thought it was four for a single, $400,000, I thought was the engineer's estimate. When we spoke to contractors, they were cheaper than that. That's why I second guessed Um, Just for Gilson, $400,000? Yeah. And that one, we'll watch the storm events in terms of Oh, what were the specs, like 36-inch RCP? No, it's a box culvert. Oh, all right. Yeah, nine by six. So, we're hoping, yeah, the debris that used to get caught isn't going to get caught any longer with that. But, I mean, they make those right in Marshfield, so. Right. Yeah.
When will that be done?
The bid opening's tomorrow, so we could award the contract relatively quickly. But it's watching the storm events. Now that some of the revetments damaged at the, by dickens and peggy, we're getting some more washover into that secondary marsh.
Right.
I just hate to have the road open and have an event like that take place. We will, the plan right now is to detour the road as well. So, we'll close it. We've been working with police and fire, and we think it's the quickest way to do it. Get, close the road down, keep the people out, the cars out, and get the work done and put it back together.
It will be an inconvenience, but it will be a full, a full detour for a while. We could do a temporary bridge, but that just drives the cost up.
Is the culvert before, what's the road that goes into Fox?
Townway.
No, no. It's right before Townway. So, no, it's
It's before Townway.
Can you take a left into, if you're coming off Gilson, take a left into that area and come out on Old Driftway? Or do you have to go all the way up to?
Right, from Townway or the one you're thinking of?
You don't think of Hueys?
You won't get to Hurlesville.
Nope.
Up Gilson.
You have to go up Gilson.
Down Driftway or cut through that, that small neighborhood on the side.
Can I just ask it a question on this topic, just because I was driving by on Saturday, Sunday, I think. Is the anticipation that this fix is really going to help the water level rise in there during new storm events? Like, is that what's holding it up?
No, because what it'll do is it'll evacuate quicker.
It'll what?
It'll, 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 that water will move out of there quicker, because right now the water will go up and over the road also. It's not just the culvert. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm just looking at that entire marsh and how much it's coming closer and closer to Kent Street, or, yeah, Kent Street turns into Kent Street right there, right? And just, I was thinking, is this culvert improvement going to?
No.
No? All right. All righty.
More for that secondary marsh that's around the neighborhood that John's talking about. Yeah.
And the big thing is, is when I said it would evacuate, that will drain quicker now, because you've got a big, instead of having a half crushed pipe that's taking the water out, you'll have a big culvert, and that'll flush it out quicker.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Sorry.
And mosquito control was out a few months ago, opening up all those ditches.
And they redid all the ditches.
See some improvement out there already. Yeah.
So, I also want to give Sean some kudos and his staff. We had the Seawall failure over at Glades Road, where we had a, a large section of undermined Seawall.
Right.
And, you know, we responded pretty quickly in getting that all, all repaired, patched up, coming up with the design, working with conservation and, and working with everybody to make that work. And I think if we didn't respond that quick, we, we would have some serious problems over there. But they did a really nice job.
Can I interrupt on that for one second while Sean's here? On that, I'm trying to find it. We did receive a letter.
From North Beach Improvement.
Yeah. I don't know if you saw this, Sean. Can I jump in on this?
Absolutely.
So, a correspondence, we'll be reading this, but since you're here, the North City Beach Improvement Association wrote a letter that would like to express their appreciation for the immediate response for undermining the Seawall long glades. And it goes on about why it was so dangerous. And the board and its members and area residents thanks those responsible for coordinating, planning, and acting on this repair. So.
Fantastic. Great.
So, they definitely noticed and appreciated.
They also brought cookies, too.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
Thanks, North City.
Obviously, you ate them.
Sure.
All right, let's get to the budget. So, right now, the department requested $715,000. Town administrator said $515,000. Last year's budget was $653,951. So, there's a, there's a difference of about $200,000.
That's in the Rose and Seawalls.
Okay.
So, it moved from the operating budget into the capital budget.
Other than that, that's it? Questions for the board on this?
So, this is the money from the override, and you're moving it from here to where?
Capital.
But it has to go towards Seawall Roads in the cap?
Yep.
Why?
It's a borrowing in those. Has a, well, one's cash and one's borrowing, right?
Both borrowing.
We didn't have the operating funds to keep doing it on the operating budget, to be honest with you.
But that's what we, that's why we did the override.
How long ago was that? How long ago was that? Damn.
How many years ago was that?
Two thousand twelve.
Seven, eight?
Two thousand eight?
Yeah.
So, we had...
But we're, we're still doing it, we just had to move it out of there. Otherwise, we would have to find another two hundred thousand dollars of cut in the operating budget, which would have run people.
Well, that's, we've talked about this in the past. We, we said the day's going to come when this is, is going to happen, and that's why we wanted to make sure that... Well, I can't remember, was it four hundred total or...
It was four hundred total and we reduced it to three fifty for projects and fifty thousand for the Coastal Resource Officer when that person lost their grant money.
Right. So, we're slowly depleting that.
We're still doing it, just moved it to another line.
Yeah, but it's not, the money's coming in here, but it's going out there maybe. All right, let me think about that.
It's, it's going into the capital?
Still have the same...
Capital's not money, capital's expenses.
Right.
Right.
For, so it's going to be a part of the capital project?
It'll now be debt, or it'll be funded from free cash.
They're both borrowing out of this. So, he has the same amount of money to spend, it's just coming out of a different, basically.
All right, well, we're not voting on it tonight, at least.
Yeah, but to Tony's point, it was a commitment that we made. Just to look at it.
We can talk about it later.
That's what I'm saying. All right, so, let's, um, let's move on at this point. Again, we're not voting on it, but we will, um, circle back to that. Sean, I think that's it for you, right?
Transfer station?
Oh, transfer station, okay, yes.
You want to go on?
Sure, which happens to be four, three, three. Actually, I was going to say, why don't we have Mike Breen come on up and, and also, um, Will? Don't you guys come on up? I usually have the whole department, I didn't realize you guys coming in from the office there, I was going to say... And we can just go right to it. So, transfer station, four, thirty-three.
It's in the back.
It's in the back, Enterprise, so...
Which is really sixty-three. Sewer, I should have gotten you that. The second one in.
Transfer, here it is. Everybody got it?
Yep.
Okay. Can we get new bags? Because they're ripping. That's the first time I've had really bad bags, they're just literally...
Really, well, that, no, that's good to know, I need to know that, yeah.
Just a heads up.
There are, yep. When you spec them, there's a mill, right? They have to have certain, certain...
We've been doing the same company for fifteen years, we've been, that's why I'm surprised, there's a little out of South Carolina we've been getting. But if we know that, I just, I, the recent batch I got, I kind of just easily like ripping apart and, and, you know, I've never had problems with bags, yep.
Well, you only put thirty pounds worth of trash in a thirty-pound bag. You put sixty pounds in, yellow rip every time.
I've been trying, you know, stuffing. Okay, so, where we're at right now? How are we doing, at least with the, with the Enterprise Fund? Are we, uh, losing, making, what's the...
Yeah, starting to deplete. Uh, it's been a challenging year on many levels. Staffing, uh, there's a whole crew down there now, uh, except for Pat. So, there were some hurdles there, and in the newspaper every other week, recycling market, um, keeps changing. In fact, um, as early as last Thursday, my thirty-dollar glass going to New Jersey called and said, "We're not coming to get your glass anymore." Oh, we're calling, hang on, we're calling Kingston. So, the scramble's on now to find a new, I did find two more contacts. But I think some of the difficulty may be trucking. I do have an offer to come collect it and take it. And right now, all our vehicles are prepped for snow. So, for us to haul it, so I'm going to have to do a little shopping. When did we start, stop bringing it to Rainham? A while? Um, over the summer in June, uh, when I came across Pace, it might even have been earlier, and they were hauling it for free. No charge, even for the tonnage. Really? That lasted, and they told us it would, uh, a couple of months, and then it went to thirty. We were paying eighty in Taunton. That's right. So, I...
And we were hauling it, weren't we?
And we were hauling it. So, I said, "Sure, come up in New Jersey." They said, "If you can fill our truck, minimum twenty-four ton, um, we'll make the trip." So, we'd fill them up, put them on the scale, make sure he, he was happy with his weight to go over the roads, and off he went. Significant savings. Now, we're back, the price they had was sixty yesterday. With a trucking cost that'll come into play.
Why such volatility? Is there, are they running out of uses for it?
End source, yeah. In fact, I got a pamphlet at Lowe's, they were using glass in countertops. And I researched the company, they're in New Hampshire. So, I reached out to them to see if they're interested. I at least opened the door. Whether we have to bring it to them, that's a different, um, discussion, but... It's moving, uh, in all directions. Plastic is starting to get as expensive to throw away as it is to recycle. And I'm not sure how DP's going to handle that.
So, we're obligated to recycle the glass, no matter what?
Right.
And so, right now, we're only getting, is it, you said sixty dollars per...
That was the, I haven't signed on with them yet, I was paying thirty, but...
Sixty dollars per what?
Sixty per ton.
Per ton?
Yeah, plus a hauling.
What happens with, if we were to do, I'm saying curbside, do these, um, companies, do they take it? Or do they say to people, "You're obligated to deal with your recyclables"?
Yeah, they're doing the same thing, um...
Pushing it back on...
That the grant that you're going to see next month here in Situate that we're part of, um, a compliance officer will be at the transfer station to educate, um, what should be thrown in. There's a lot of plastics that should be just thrown in the trash that are being recycled. And then, when they get to our vendor and they sort them, they end up with a big pile of trash and no recycling, well, they got to throw the trash out. So, they're talking about, yeah, fining us.
So, that, that degrades our level, when you sell your recycling, you're rated a certain level? Where, you know, like an A might be the best, that lowers our level, so we don't get as much for our recycling when we, when we get rid of it.
It's like the plastic bags, you don't want them in there, they're useless, but people throw them in thinking it's...
What they do is they wind up and tangle the, uh, the billers.
Well, that's a discussion we should have at some point, maybe sooner than later.
Yeah, we, I, I've been watching the rates, um, again, um, I hate to do it, but I'm trying to see what improvement we made from last July's upping the specific, um, the C and D waste, the construction debris. What kind of revenues we'll bring in if we raise those rates on the computers and the things like that. The C and D, we did raise the rates, I heard from one person, but you have to, there, there are fewer places and it's just, rates are going up. Right, yep, right, stay current with it, yeah.
All right, so, let's turn to your, um, budget here, let's see. Looking at the, um, revenues. Let's see, what are we doing? Propose this revenues for this year, we're anticipating will be one million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred. Your, uh, total operating expenses anticipated to be one million, three hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Am I looking at the right thing here?
Hmm, I got a different number.
Yeah, yeah. And then, um, so, we're looking at a surplus of about seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-one, that's what we're anticipating. Debt service is sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty, so a total surplus of nine hundred and eleven dollars, what we're, we're looking at. We're really running it at cost, hoping nothing goes wrong.
We've got a thousand bucks, just like the other one. Um, the, um, the bulk waste revenue line goes up considerably from, are you going to raise the price? Is that, are you going to get four sixty-six out of that? That's what we were just talking about. I think when I projected, that's where that revenue will come from, but that's if I can keep up. I mean, as early as now, yesterday or Thursday, my glass number changed from what I was projecting for the year. Well, this is revenue. This is revenue from charging bulky waste. Last year's budget was two forty-five.
That's right here, unless you're projecting.
Double? They run up a lot. Almost, yeah.
That is good. All right, questions from the board on this? All right, then. Sean, I think, are you out then? You're done, right?
Free to go?
Free to go.
Free to go.
Hit the road, oh, before, before it's too...
Thank you.
Let's move over to, um... Got to go with Mike, and then I'll go to, and kind of Will, okay? So, the next one happens to be, um, actually, you know what? Mike, do you mind? The very next one happens to be sewer, so if you just turn the page, we'll go to sewer guys.
Or Mike. It's only that it says four AM.
I'm sorry.
So much work.
All right, let's go to the sewer.
Will's young, he can wait.
I'm happy to wait.
Not that you're not young, Mike.
Done a good job, Will, at the plant. Let's just get to your numbers, how's that? So, your department request was for three million, seven hundred, four thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and six cents. Town administrator said three million, five hundred, seven dollars and a hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Your budget last year was for three million, eight hundred ninety-nine, thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. So, it's a reduction from last year, but it's less, um, than what the town administrator's looking at. The difference in your, um...
It's probably hookup fees.
Let's see.
The debt went down.
Went down, but also the, uh, like your costs, where is it?
Can I chime in for just a second?
Sure.
So, um, Will's debt went down, but the part that went down is not supported by receipts. It's the, it's the part that's the debt exclusion that went down by a half a million, so that was coming out of the tax levy. So, that didn't help him.
Okay.
And, and Will will tell you, he, his budget was chopped. And he, we're still putting the four hundred million dollars of retained earnings in there just to get him where he's at. Something he wants, I'm sure that, and I kind of want to preface it, we've thought about it, that one-time revenues, his revenue stream does not support his operating budget. One-time revenues often get over the hump. We had that with the betterments, and now we're seeing it again with the connection fees. So, the estimates that I have that I work with Jim on are probably lower than what Will thinks he's going to bring in. Are we going to, we think he's going to bring, bring in, but they're one-time revenues. So, these connection fees aren't going to come back. So, he's got good connection fees this year, but I don't know when Building C's going to come on. He doesn't know when Building B's going to come on. So, his budget is not where he would like it to be. It's not where it needs to be. But that's because he's still not set operating revenues that's important, his regular operating budget. And we had that discussion in, in the rates, that the rates are still not there yet. Like, it's going to be a multi-year process to get them there. So, I just want to help Will preface this, because I know how difficult this is for him trying to move forward with a budget which he knows is going to cause him difficulty this year.
Very well said. Sean?
Will, by percentage, what amount, if you're, and, and, I'm not going to hold you to it, what amount comes in by, uh, transport, by truck? One percent, five percent?
Septage, what?
Yes, yes.
Percent flow or percent revenue?
Flow and then revenue, either, either one, relatively small must be, right?
Flow, flow-wise as a percentage, it'd be, it'd be pretty small. If I were to run the numbers, it would be probably single-digit percents.
Right.
Uh, maybe anywhere between one and four percent of total flow for the facility.
To Nancy's point, I just wanted to, is there, could I get, could I, could I, if I was creative, could I sneak in if Situate's cheaper than some other place, if I was in that business? Do you have a good safeguard on that? Or, or do you not really care? Because we're getting, are we, are we...
Anybody.
Are we making money?
We limit who can commit it. No, we're taking, we've been taking...
Uh, we limit by towns, uh, we accept septicage from Situate, Cohasset, and hang on, uh, and no other towns.
Um, why not Marshfield? Why not another town? I just doesn't, I just...
Um, on the background of this, I'm, I'm not really sure of.
Okay.
When I was first hired, we had just started accepting...
In the past, that's what, that's what Bob had started, but he's not out carding them and asking where they got the waste from when they're coming in.
He's not?
Not necessarily, no. They're coming in and most of them have accounts set up and in their track.
I'm just wondering, is, is that, is that an area where we could make, are we allowed to make a little more revenue?
Do we even make money on that?
Yes.
We do, it's significant, and we actually...
And where we compare to...
Since we raised our rates recently on the septicage, we've noticed this kind of a sharp decline on that.
Oh, really?
Because, uh, Rosano Davis was using us quite a bit. But now, what they're doing is they're waiting, letting it build up, they've got a storage facility, and then they take it off in a bigger truck and take it down to Taunton for, for our old rate.
Right.
So, we have noticed a bit of a kickback on that, I mean, that's pretty much, but, uh, I mean, that is something, as a board, I don't know if the board, when they originally, um, opened it up for septicage for everybody, if, if that was in the plans that you only want to take it from certain towns, you're afraid you're going to be flooded with it, um, and just schedule those towns, but we, we could open it to all towns.
We probably are, if we're not carding people.
I mean...
Every now and then, we've noticed something from Hanover, um, but it hasn't been, uh, it's been within our, our ranges for accepted loans, so we, we've accepted it.
And it's kind of a moneymaker, like the C and D at the transfer station. If they have a sticker and they come in and, and, you know, we know we make, we make money on it.
It's one or two percent of our... It's not a big deal, it's nothing.
All right, so, we've got some considerations, serious considerations that we need to take a look at going forward then, with your budget, and figure out the, um, lack of revenue that we need to decide how we're going to deal with it. Rates, unless we do something else, we get...
Well, we've talked about this, it's three things. Rates, expenses, and expanding our use. You know, we've got to get more people on the system that are in our current infrastructure. We got to let people hook up spaghetti lines or whatever they do to pull them in, because we need the sixteen thousand dollars. We probably should have done this article before, earlier in the night.
Well, one, one of the issues that we are having, Tony, enough to cut you off, is, is we had a very wet summer. Our, our average flows are way, way up due to the INI and everything else coming in, so, um, we are, we're taking, I'm sure Will's average, I haven't seen the average yet for December, or, you know, for, for January even, but I'm, I mean, we're taking a lot of water in, it was such a wet spring, we usually wear dry.
That's a good point, I forgot that, you know, so if we can, what, what's the percentage again? It's always mind-blowing, like fifty percent of the stuff that we process is the ocean. So...
That's about, yeah, forty to fifty percent in the wet seas.
Was it December we had the real high tides?
Yeah, we had a...
Real high tides in December, no rain, just astronomically high tides, and I think Will said they're doing almost three million gallons a day.
Right.
Which is almost triple. Almost triple what we would normally do.
What it was previous years.
So, maybe some of the INI work we're doing down in, uh, by the lighthouse will have a big impact. I mean, those are the things that we have to see, because we've got seven fifty in retained earnings, and every year, we're chopping away at it, and we have one year left.
Like Nancy was talking about, the, the, the budget before you, uh, I believe, is supported by revenue?
Well, no, there's, there's also retained earnings.
And retained earnings?
Yeah.
But it, it, it is shy of amounts that I think will be required, uh, for purchases of, of things like chemicals for our plant, which we're required to purchase to meet permit levels. I'm not certain we'll be able to, uh, get through the entire fiscal year with this.
What line is that falling in, Will? Is that your equipment parts or, okay?
Chemical line? We're going to have to raise the rates.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
So, in addition to transfer station, I'm going to want to probably bring this up at a future meeting to discuss it at this point. I mean, there's no sense waiting until all of a sudden it's critical, but we're going to have to talk about rates, short term.
Yeah, and if we can encourage twelve houses to hook up, it's sixteen grand a house, that's your deficit. Maybe my math's a little, maybe it's fifteen. You know, there's a cost associated with it, but that's, that's all you need in the betterments to, to cover the revenue.
Nancy, do you have a quick question? Quick.
Only the best, the best, you have to do it two, nine years, but every year after that, now it's a structural deficit. And that's part of this problem.
So, the quarter million that we're using for retained earnings?
Every year, every year, you've got to bring 15 to 20.
Next year, we're a quarter million dollars in the hole before we do anything, before the price of chemicals go up, before the price of... We start at 250,000 in the hole next year by using retained earnings this year.
So, what we were trying to work with Will was to identify those repair and maintenance items that maybe are one-time or not going to happen every year. And we'll match those with the, the one-time revenues from the connection fees that we're getting in excess, and try to get that out of his budget and get that dealt with separately at, like, a special town meeting article. So, okay, we have $200,000 extra in, um, these revenues, we have $200,000 for the identified repairs that aren't going to be in your budget, but you're going to do them separately. Trying to at least match up the revenue source, maybe something that's more of a one-time, or close out the retained earnings and you do it in the capital plan.
I agree with Tony, though, I think we've been talking about this for a little while now, is that I do think we need some sort of a conservative plan to identify what areas we would bring 10, 15 homes online. So, I think it also is the fair thing to do with regards to other development. What?
We could probably do...
It's, okay, I know Sean's thinking right away, and if you're, you're right, we can have that discussion. Being 10 o'clock, let's just get to the numbers, because it's, it's going on here.
Unless I want to discuss it right now, I just...
No, 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 I know, I know, I just want to have a...
She just wants to support me, it doesn't happen often, so let her go.
Will, thank you, I think we're all set with you. Other than that, then let's turn it over to, uh...
Good job, you've got, you've got a challenge ahead of you, and we're going to support you to figure out how to make it work.
If I could just make one note on the, um, seeking additional sewer connections. We are limited with our capacity and loads, uh, and we may have to look into investing in INI projects to free up capacity to seek, uh, hookups and the number that would support, uh, the budget moving forward.
Absolutely, understood.
Yeah.
Like, we know that...
Well, hopefully the 2 million we're getting...
Will help that, yeah.
An impact.
Yeah.
Got it.
And, and Will and his guys have done a great job down the plant, if anybody's been down there recently and wants to come down for a tour. We had the advisory, our seat, uh, Capital down there last week, they did a complete tour, everything's looking pretty shipshape, clean, um, a lot of different things have changed. And the work that they did on the copper project, getting that copper project, it saved the town from spending 15 to 20 million dollars on a new outfall, which would have been a consent order by the DEP, really is praiseworthy, and he's done a great job.
Thanks, Will.
Good job, Will.
For Willie's, who are doing the, getting rid of the INI projects, don't see the point, and then that project's going to go right down Oceanside, Ocean View, I keep getting that.
Oceanside.
It's going to go right down there. Cedar Point's 40,000, Ocean is what, Kevin? 20 to 30,000?
I thought it was 26 or something, but there's, there's other areas, like, the, the thing with Oceanside Drive, there are some areas where you do that, but, but your big carrying pipe goes right down Oceanside Drive, so a lot of the services, it wouldn't be something you'd change over to a pipe, but maybe it's, it's replacing some of the services. But that's something that came up with the water project, I said the water project is, is coming out, and we're going to rip up Oceanside Drive. I know it's hard to say, it might get worse, um, than it is now.
It might, but that's okay.
And, and then eventually, we're going to have...
It's going to be pretty difficult.
Well, I just wouldn't want to be, I wouldn't want to be plowing down there right now, when it happens, let's put it that way.
So, I just, it, but that's coming up in the future, and one of the things that we are looking at is that we would do a complete redevelopment to that road, but, um, that, we might have to let the pipe settle out as, as it goes.
Just to that point, because we'll move on, providing you have a well-thought-out plan and tell everybody what's going to happen, they'll survive and they'll endure the next two years, if that's what we're talking about, knowing what the end result is, they won't.
My, my only point was, we are not going to be able to expand the capacity in the plant that we can discharge until we go back to DEP and say, we've taken care of the INI.
Right.
Right.
So, and, you know, Cedar Point, it's 2 and 1/2 million dollars projected for 4,000 linear feet, about 4,000, so it's, it's, can be expensive.
Well, well, do we have the capacity for 15 single homes?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that's what we're talking, you know? I, I understand...
Preparing this budget, I would have advised to proceed, assuming that Cituit can get handled by the regional group, to immediately pursue Phase 4 of the sewer expansion project. But with the, the wet season this year, um, I, I would need to revise that, uh, that request. So, for, for a phased expansion, we, we don't have the capacity for that at this time.
Gotcha.
Fix our leaks.
Mike, thank you. Welcome to Push the Sign. To the highway, first and foremost, thank you very much to the department, you, for this past weekend, the one thing I wanted to say is, that's a real challenge when you have a huge, um, initially, there's some snow, and then you have rain, and then immediate thaw, freeze, I mean, that's, that, that froze pretty quickly and turned to what it is now, so, well done.
I think we're going to be flooding.
Uh, yeah, tomorrow's going to be another challenge, I'm sure. Uh, 4/22, actually.
It's tomorrow.
Did I get that right, 4/22? If it's 4/22. So, um, your department request was for $1,275,622.67. Town administrator's recommended $1,147,346.7. Our request last year was $1,122,010, so it's gone up. The difference between, um, town administrator and yours is approximately, um, 30,000, thereabouts.
If, if the board will be called, it's for Mike Stotts, when I did my budget presentation, this is one of the areas I said, if money fell out of the sky, I'd like to put it back. There just wasn't enough funds to support all the stuff that they wanted to do.
So, does this, with the, with the insurance rate going down, there might be some money falling, so, yeah, we'll see.
Is there any new employees in here? Did we ever hire?
I think there were summer employees, we...
Seasonal, two extra seasonal.
Two extra seasonal, and extended their summer hours a little bit, but that was...
And then you were going to get contracting people in? Is there any money in?
Yeah, we did put money in there, and that's in public grounds, I think, we did put money in, that's to cover some of the costs.
Was it 4/22 or 4/29?
I'm wrong one. Never mind.
Yeah.
I'm on 4/29.
Public grounds, when we get to that one, I'm going to ask that question.
The answer's yes, so I all said.
Good.
What are we, highway?
Yeah. You guys do a great job for what little you have.
Do you have vacancies, Mike, or no?
No, no vacancy right now, it's, no. So, um, Mike's done a great job this year, um, working with the guys. One of the things that we've been doing is, in, in the snow fighting, I had mentioned it before, kind of kiddingly, uh, in front of the board, that we're going to snow classes and snow education, and how to fight, how to fight storms. And, you know, this past storm, I, I think we had a lot of luck. I, I don't mean luck, but we had a, we had a good result compared to some of the other towns in the surrounding areas with, um, the methods that Mike has implemented, with, um, we had the brining system, um, we were able to get a new truck, and we have the brining system included in that, we did brining, that was an improvement. We've also used a, another chemical which is called the Magico, which the board approved, um, not that long ago, and, you know, you can talk about it if you like.
Does that work well?
Yeah, that's had great success. The guys don't even, they were out in the freezing cold weather, mixing it up, uh, just to use that instead of the salt, because they have such a great result, it, it, it's helped and melted, when it's real cold temperatures like that, it'll still, it'll still melt, where regular salt will just sit on top. And there's no scatter anymore, where the white salt would just go scattered, it bounced to the side of the road, but the chemical in there, it's sitting right on the road, and we've had some great results with that, so... So, the salt is actually, it, it's treated with molasses and, and a magnesium chloride that, that lowers the temperature. Typically, regular salt, you can only use up to like 17 degrees. This drops the temperature to a little below zero, so that you can still use it, um, and use it successfully. While you're doing that, the other thing is, the, um, molasses and the salt actually sticks better to the road, so we have less scatter. Before, I'd have people calling, calling me up and say, I've got scatter 10 feet into my lawn. Yeah. One of the things through Capital, we, we did purchase new trucks this year, we have some of the new trucks, we've outfitted them with sanders, we've been doing all our own sanding, or all our own salting, uh, in-house with, with the highway guys.
Good.
And they've done a really good job with that. They've done training for speed-wise, and we've got everything calibrated, yes.
Can I ask you guys a question? Driving around town, we've got a lot of places where we've got extensive water runoff from development, right? It's not that our drains are clogged or anything, but First Parish, Old Oak and Bucket, I don't know, those are the areas when I drive around.
This has been the worst.
In weather like this, I'm sorry?
This is, this has been the worst runoff I've ever seen.
Yeah, it's awful. What, what kind of equipment do you have to take care of that? Because it just creates really dangerous situations, because you can't just plow it, right? It's big chunks of ice that are all stuck there.
One of the main areas that we have is, is the Toll Brothers area, um, we talked to Karen and Sean. They're having a meeting with Toll Brothers in their contract SLT to see what they can do to stop that.
But they have the resources to take care of that. I'm talking about us. First Parish, Old, Old Oak and Bucket, it's, these are houses that have been there for, you know, many years, where the runoff is just awful.
Well, we start with if anyone's discharging illegally, and we start with, uh, a warning letter that, you know, there's fines to be coming, and, and we go forward with that. And I've been talking to a lot of people about having, fixing the repairs themselves, the people on, um, Clap Road, there's a couple of areas that they're getting contractors to fix their areas, and the, um, area over on, um, Anne Vinyl that was a, a problem, we fixed that ourselves, we, we did some piping down there and fixed the problem. So, we're trying to eliminate them one by one as, as it comes, but this year, there was an extreme amount of, um, flooding going on, and, and the water table was so high that I've, I've never seen it. I've, I've sent out over 35 warning letters of people illegally discharging, and I, I, I feel their pain, they have really no place to, to, you know, put it, so they're putting it in the road, but I'm...
Yeah, and honestly, I don't know, know that the couple of situations that I'm talking about are people illegally discharging, I think it's just the way in which the construction has caused the water to run off their properties, like, just, you know, period.
Yeah, no, it does happen.
Yeah.
It is a problem, and it's a concern of ours, I mean, I, I can think of five locations that I'm not happy with, that, you know, that do that a lot.
Where that happens, yeah. So, I guess, again, I'm just curious...
Eberdam Road, right before the light.
Yeah.
They fixed that, I thought.
Where's that one?
They'd fix it.
Eberdam, they were, you start going down, it's like you hit a ice patch, you're like...
Oh, yeah, that wasn't as bad this time.
Coming from the condo complex.
Do we have equipment that we can get that stuff up?
There's drainage in the street that sometimes we can take that water and put it into existing drainage. Sometimes it could just be a berm along the edge of the road to hold it off the road until it gets to drainage. Sometimes it's, just, there's nothing we can do unless we want to put in real expensive drainage, so they, they salt it as much as they can, uh, they send out the plow with the, it's got a belly plow on it, and these, so the, the weight of the trucks on that plow blade...
Can break up the ice.
Try to break it up as best they can.
Yeah.
But...
Because they're impassable.
Yeah, that didn't work today on Hadley Road up by the tollbo, we tried to put that plow on it.
Didn't work.
It was like a solid rock out there, so...
Yeah, okay.
We just salted and sanded it, you know, as much as we could. We'd bring our heavy loader over and try to, try to break it, but sometimes when you get that, it just skims right over the top, we can't break it without damaging the road.
Yeah, okay.
We did that today.
Well, I think we just went over your numbers, right? Because if not, then I'm beginning to forget. Did we not?
Yep.
Any further questions for Mike, so we can go home, get some sleep?
Anything on snow and ice, because that'll be, Mike will be on the snow and ice.
Mike? All right. All right, so let's get to 4/23. Do that one then. Snow and ice is 4/23. Let's just get that up. So, your budget right now is, uh, this year is level funded. Town administrator's $497,113. That's what it was last year, that's what it's requested this year, and town administrator's agreeing to that. So, hopefully, we don't get much snow.
So, some of the things that we've been doing is we've, we've been improving, um, some of our equipment, and one of the things that we are looking for in the future is, as money becomes available through the snow budget, is adding, um, side tanks to be trucks, so that what we can actually do is spray liquid, um, the liquid brine, as well as potentially the Magico on the salt itself as it's being, as it's being, uh, put out. And that actually wetens it, and it starts activating it, and it sticks even better than, than what we have now, so we'd have less scatter. Now, we're doing it manually, we're taking the loader, we're spreading the salt out in the yard, we're spraying it, and so, it would, it would be easier just to spray it right on the material though, too.
One quick question, um, the overtime, is that all, is that contract, all that, or is it?
So, which item, because this... God bless.
Um, I'm looking at...
The overtime is actually our, I guess.
It is our, our, that's what I wanted, thank you.
Equipment rentals and purchase of services.
Sorry?
Equipment rentals and purchase of services of the contractors.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, snow and ice is a line that you actually have to, uh, at least level fund, and those rare instances where the state will reimburse us for a very bad winter, if you've reduced your snow and ice budget beyond what it was the previous year, you can make yourself ineligible for any state assistance. So, that has to at least be level funded year to year.
Yep.
Which is why you resist raising it, oh, because you don't want to, you don't want to lock money in there, raise it to a point where you're not, know you're not going to spend it, and then you can never reduce it, so...
In that little storm we just had, I mean, we would have rather preferred two feet of snow, I think, instead of the ice.
Tease your plow again than it is to...
It takes so much more.
State was out for 30, almost 30 hours.
Yeah, and just salt and salt and salt, and just keep salting until you get safe.
All right, public rounds, which happens to be, um, 4/29. I'll just get to the numbers, and then if there's any questions. Department's requesting $975,193.50. Town administrator's agreed to $872,214, a difference of just about 100,002, 102,000. Uh, last year was 830,000, um, so, um, a large increase in requests. You do an awful lot with a little, that's the key. So, um, Tony, do you have a question? I think this is one department you were going to ask about.
Well, I guess, the first question is, is all these come out of rental equipment? What is, what is rental equipment?
Rental equipment would be like the tree contractor that we, well, we'll... Other, the contract laborers. The contractor, the, the guys that come out and fertilize the fields, um, if we need something, you know, special, and, yeah, as Mike said, the trees.
Sewer, well, that's not for this one, but...
Or whatever, whatever else you'd have for, for the rentals.
So, that's the one that's cut dramatically, so if it's, if it's there, and then, is this, this is where you would hire contract laborers, Jim, what we were talking about, more staff to come in and assist them?
Yeah, but the money that I thought you were talking about, which is for the buildings that have, um, extensive landscaping, uh, that our guys really don't do, that's in Kevin's budget, Facility's budget, we put money in there so he can bring people in to take care, so, public safety, we don't take care of all those flower beds and everything, we'll have someone come do that.
And that's a, a contract person in facilities?
Yep, contracts, facilities, yeah.
Why'd you do that?
It's, it's too much to handle, if you, if you look at the plannings on, huh? Oh, sorry. No, no.
You didn't do it, he did it.
No, but I have to say, it is, it is, uh...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a lot of hand work, it's a lot of real time-consuming work.
Yeah, I mean, it's like around our fields and stuff, there's weeds and just it looks like...
We take out big mowers and we, we mow and cut trim, but, you know, we're not going to, we don't weed flower beds and, and do that stuff, it's just, it's too time-consuming for the staff we have, so...
Probably a lot of training, too, yeah.
Yeah, but if, with the summer help, they're pulling out everything.
Exactly. Okay, good strategy.
Mike, you're all set. That's it for you. All right, Kevin, we're going to turn to 4/21, administration, and then you're done, Kevin, for the night.
Keep thinking of it.
The last budget for the night. Sorry, Nancy, you're going to be here next Tuesday?
I'm like wallpaper, I'm always hanging around.
What's that?
I'm like wallpaper, I'm always hanging around.
Good. We'll postpone yours until next week, okay? We'll have a lot of questions at that point. So, for administration, excuse me, um, your department request was $217,000, Kevin, $971. Town administrator's recommended $153,122. Last year's budget was $148,722, so it's up from last year, but less than what you were asking, and, um, it appears to be...
Is there a person you wanted that isn't being hired?
I was going to say, it looks like a salary.
Um, I think the salary shifted around, for me.
You, you lost a top step person and gained a, a lower step person?
Oh, so, Chrissy retired, and then we brought in Lucie, who's just starting off at the, at the lower level, but I don't think that wasn't all of it.
70 grand?
There was a safety officer in there.
Oh, I, I had requ, I'm sorry.
Requested that I didn't fund.
With the new OSHA requirements in, following with the state, one of the things I put in a request for is a, is an OSHA, or, not an OSHA, a safety...
in a request for is a, is an OSHA, or not an OSHA, a safety officer.
Is it something that we could share with other towns? I mean, because they're going to be going from one town to another.
We are having that discussion with a bunch of towns through MIA.
All right, good. Seems to be like a redundant position that every town should have. And yet, you could probably share amongst four, five, or six towns.
Right, so we are, I've had that discussion with Cohassen, a couple of the towns, and they're having it with MIA as something to maybe do through MIA. Because obviously, if something happens, the insurance company's going to be on the hook for some stuff.
Right, that's good.
The big thing is, is we need a lot of updates to, you know, to be OSHA compliant with this. You know, I can just think of, it goes through everything from the water towers. The water towers should now have a closed lattice where we have regular ladders that go up. You should have tie-off points. It's just on and on and on. It's significant amounts, you know, entire townwide safety plans, not just for us, police, fire are affected, the library's affected now. There's, there's a lot of different things that are involved. There's just materials, safety data sheets, safety policy plans, the library in itself, ergonomic standards. It's just a lot that's brought up with this, the new OSHA requirements. And it's going to be hard to put together. So even if you did split it with three towns, whoever that person was, could be busy in situates for the next year just bringing it up to vote, I believe it.
All right. Any other questions, Kevin? Kevin, thank you very much.
Good job, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin.
Sorry to keep you as late as we have, but between the budget and the water, that was a good update.
No problem at all.
All right, now, thank you, Nancy, for allowing us to table yours until next week. I guess I get us to a review of the articles, and I believe we were providing it in written form. When you say two in the pack, are you talking about this one? Right, and then the other ones are... Yep, I'm with you. So it appears from the special town meeting, we have six, which are kind of the standard, six items that we have for the special town meeting. Unpaid bills, budget reconciliations, snow and ice, emergency costs, rescind debt authorization, pay down debt, and then construction of new senior center and veterans memorial, gym rehab. Then the annual, we have as of right now, 32 articles. So I guess we're going to have to really kind of go through some of these. Well, some we can do what we did the last time, Jim, right? We take a...
You have consent a lot here.
Consent, so we can really shoot through most of these, of which I'll probably have. And then you guys can deal with the rest of them.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, it's just the petition articles.
No, I just want to at least give people an idea of what we're looking at. So the petition articles, there are three. On second page, one is amend the zoning map for Hummer Rock Village Residential Overlay District. Before, what was handed out was a map, a zoning map. They proposed, rather, I say zoning map, but amendment to the zoning map. It looks like they're looking to add property, which I think is the old boatyard.
It's the boatyard, yeah.
And they want to make it part of the overlay, it's part of the business district. They want to put it in the overlay district so you could have business on the first floor, residential on the second.
Right, it's MIA, so they were allowed to put condominium complexes.
Yeah, so clearly whoever's bought the boatyard wants to build condos down there.
Doesn't this have to go through planning?
Schedule for planning already.
Oh, it is?
Schedule the hearing.
Okay.
I'll even be there next week and have to look.
That's right on the waters.
It's right on the, in fact, I'm not sure. Which one's the bridge? Is it...
Bridge would be just to the right of that.
Yeah, so when you go over the bridge, it's going to be on left-hand side.
Go over the bridge.
On left-hand side, it's like the boatyard.
It's now a marina.
You can't see the bridge, but the bridge is right here.
I wonder why it was excluded to begin with? Doesn't make sense why it is excluded.
I'm going to guess because they want to keep the boatyard there.
Before the bridge?
As soon as you get to a bridgeway, go left-hand side.
Here's the bridgeway right here. Go over, right here. Go over, it's the bridge.
So that's kind of where that guy wanted to put that bar?
Well, the bar was a...
Right on the backside, same, same building.
Yep.
Not a bad idea.
So that's one. The second one is a petition article, Go Green. People who have petitioned to, what's the part of our thing here? To shut down...
Terminate the lease or something.
Terminate the lease with Go Green. So they put it on, so they'll, are they going to present to us or no?
Wait a minute, yeah.
All right, so they'll come in. And then the third one is...
Can I make a comment on that one?
Sure.
Just so people may not know, I mean, Go Green is a big place and they've got a lot going on there. But I'll tell you, before Go Green was there, it was a mess. It was over at the dump. It cost us money every month to move the stuff to get it thrown away. And we get rental income from them and a good amount of rental income. So unless there's a better solution, which I don't know that there's one, although he's got a lot of mulch there and it's wet sometimes going around there, he's working with us to try and make the town better. I do not think, I do think that he provides a huge service to this community. And I think that the town definitely reaps rewards of revenue and lack of cost to have to get rid of all this brush stuff, especially the amount that we're bringing over there. To pay someone else to pull that away is incredibly expensive. Enough said.
There's a question as to whether or not a vote at town meeting can cancel a contract that's been entered by the town. I don't think it can, but council's looking at it.
Yeah.
So if that's the case, it won't even make it to the floor of town meeting.
Be non-binding or something?
Yeah, I don't...
I couldn't agree with Tony more.
Well, I would suspect if we can rein in and bring him in and speak with him about all the concerns that the residents in Abutters have.
I mean, the board's aware that I had Deputy Thompson down there probably once a week in the fall. We have another meeting with Mr. Lopes shortly with Deputy Thompson, myself, and Chief Murphy. So I have a lot of things that need to be done before the spring to clean that up to make some room, but we're going to start now.
That's good. I mean, I think if we could provide the petitioners with some of our action plans and things that he's agreed to, it may be...
I suspect the petitioners have some ulterior motive because there've been things going on, I guess, at the plan, at the zoning board. And I think it's their former partners, some of the signatures to it. But I agree with Tony and Sean and Moore. I think you're absolutely right. And Karen, I haven't had any chance to ask you, and I'm sure you will disagree or agree. You know, the fact of the matter is, is that it cost the town on the days off, they would haul all that material from the transfer station down. So think about the waste. Number two, this is next to the sewer treatment plant. Who wants to be located next, directly next to the sewer treatment plant, right underneath the wind turbine? And it's in the industrial district, which means it's not residential. It's not, nobody's going to be living there. And we're making money off it. That's the key, making money. When people complained years ago that we didn't make money off things, and here's a chance for making it, I don't know what you're going to do there with those obstacles surrounding it.
It's a double whammy. You lose the revenue and you accept the cost.
Right. What kind of revenue do we take in with, from them?
Over $80,000.
A year?
Every year.
Okay.
So I mean, yes, I think there's certainly issues with some fires that, you know, happen with the water. I get that. He needs to, you know, there are some other issues with the traffic, certainly during the fall. But I'm like, you can get rid of your yard waste for free. Next question is, get rid of this? How are you going to get rid of your yard waste? Because you're going to have to pay taxes, we're going to have to find a place, or we're not going to do it at all. And then you're going to have to hire somebody to come take it. So that's a dangerous article if people don't really understand the impact of, they really thought that could break the contract, so I'm sorry.
Plus, he does a good job. And he's, he's going to work with the town to fix all the little quirks that we're having right now.
He's a resident. He's, you know, it's not like somebody's coming in. He's a resident who lives here. It's a small business, it's a business. It's creating tax revenue, you know? So I'm like, every... Karen, I, we, go ahead, sorry. I've kind of jumped to here.
The only thing I can add is, I agree that it's a useful business, but it, we've got to, you know, I know the gentleman's been working hard with Officer Thompson to have them comply with the terms of the lease. But, you know, it's really been a problem for a lot of people between the smell and the congestion and the hazards. So that's just got to improve. But I think pulling the trigger to shut it makes no sense at all.
And the next petition article is a building moratorium that people are looking to say there should be no building going forward. I don't have it in front of me, but I think it says for...
It's kind of hard to read. Can you read it?
It says, it's concern over the limited waters supply and the board is defer any new construction in a town intended for multi-use or single-family with developers going to develop more than one residence.
So they want to shut down anything with multi-use for tenants and single-family occupancy and multiple, so... Anyway, that's the petition article. It'll certainly be in the advisory report when...
Is that legal, Jim?
I've had a couple of conversations with council. Still waiting for a definitive answer. Mr. John, I can't even pronounce John's last name. I don't think he's here. He's on the water resource committee. Kevin and I had a long conversation with him. I don't think it's legal to pick and choose what you wish to a lot of hookup or what you don't wish to a lot of hookup.
Probably talk to John.
So I don't think it's legal... What's before you, I don't believe is legal at this point. But I'm waiting. I've had several conversations with Cindy, and they can be rather long-winded. And I'm like, I just need, tell me if it is or it isn't. I don't believe it is. Kevin doesn't believe it is. And I think when we're done with Cindy, that the way it's presented, it's not.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Moving on, discuss vote amendment to architect contract for council on aging project.
Yeah, I just got the information that the board asked for last week, yesterday, so...
But let's put it off to next week.
I didn't see anything different, okay.
Okay, so, I agree to that? All right. New business, discuss vote drain layers license renewal.
Okay, okay.
Hang on, I'll get down there after some, oops, back up.
Move to approve...
Renewal of a...
The renewal of a drain layers license to the following businesses, Ayaria Brothers Incorporated, E.L. Margets and Sons Incorporated.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? No questions? Seeing on all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Great. And how about...
One day?
About one day. What is it?
Move that the board of selectmen approve one-day wine and malt licenses to Taylor Made Bar Teller for an event at the Citroen Harbor Community Building on February 2nd from 6:30 to 10:30. And the Knights of Columbus for an event at the Knights of Columbus Hall on February 3rd, 2019, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Takes care of new business. Anybody want any liaison reports? Anything they want to say significantly?
I can't remember anything.
All right, moving on, correspondence. I don't think there's much. You seem to read everything, right?
No, I already mentioned the letter from North Citroen Beach Improvement. Citroen Harbor Business Association is having a celebration of 11 years of their work on the Thursday evening, January 24th, at the Mill Morph, starting at 6:00. Invite everyone to that. And M.I.A. has sent a letter, which we've already talked about, which was the, receiving the wellness department, receiving the best newcomer award.
Great.
And I think that that is it.
That's it. Motion to accept the meeting minutes of the board of selectmen's meeting held on January 8th, 2019. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anything anybody else wants to share at all? Any other business that...
I just have one quick thing. I was, I spoke with a few of you individually about trying to set up a meeting where we can kind of bring our minds together and talk about all these projects that are going on, the fields, the senior center, the rec, the gym, the, all these sorts of stuff, and just kind of have a working meeting where we could hash out our ideas. Because we really haven't talked about it a lot outside of going to meetings and stuff. And some of the stuff is coming together not as I envisioned. And I, I think some of you feel the same way. So it may be a good idea to get a meeting together. So I didn't know if we could set one up for maybe beginning of next week.
Let's take a look. Now, we have a meeting next Tuesday.
We do?
We do, on the 5th. So I guess, don't we? We have a meeting next, or wait a minute, what's next week?
29th?
Oh, is it the following week? Okay. Actually, no, you know what? I think I should have it on my calendar.
We're meeting on the 5th, but next week is the 29th.
Jeez, I'm already two weeks...
Yeah, right.
That is right. The 5th is when we're meeting. And then 19th. So next week is the week of the 28th. So... Let's see. So can we look to maybe, can we circulate some dates for next week? If not, then can we try to circulate states for the following week? I know we have one on the 5th.
Maybe Tuesday, maybe next Tuesday, the 29th?
I won't be here.
You won't be here? Why don't we email when people are going to be around?
Yeah, if we could.
On an off Tuesday night, if you want to try to do?
The 12th would be the off Tuesday night.
You're doing Monday or Tuesday or...
And you went to February vacation, right?